Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between the traditional custodians of this country, which has inspired language, song, dance, law, and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to those elders who have passed, those with us today, and those into the dreaming, and those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect, and kindness, in caring for one another and this country. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Counselor Hutton, any apologies? No apologies? We move on. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mister Chair, I move the minutes of the 4,719th meeting, held on Tuesday, the 22nd of August 2023, be received, taken as read, and confirmed.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Counselor Hutton and seconded by Counselor Mackay that the meeting of the 4,719th meeting of council, held on the 22nd of August 2023, be received, taken, and as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. I'd like to call on Miss Sharon Bartlam, who will address the chamber on koala conservation in Brisbane. Please feel free to sit or stand. You have five minutes from when you're ready.
Mister Chair, Lord Mayor, and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak for the koalas of Whitehill, for the community who are concerned about their deaths, and future generations who may never get to see one. Whitehill Reserve is home to an estimated forty to sixty koalas, and believed to be the densest and healthiest population in Queensland. While not a defined koala priority area, that is unrelated to ecological value, DES confirms that the population is critical and protection rests with council. These gentle creatures have been killed on the roads surrounding Whitehill for many years, with Boundary Road claiming at least six victims in just recent months. This atrocity has continued even since their endangered status in Queensland last year, and projections of extinction in the wild by 2050. While council has taken some recent actions, it is insufficient to prevent a significant and unacceptable loss of endangered life. The recent speed limit reduction on Boundary Road to sixty will not save them, with two dying in the month-long trial. At sixty, a sedan takes forty-five metres to stop, which is discordant with when koalas cross suddenly from a verge that is obscured. Eighty per cent of car strikes are fatal, so threat mitigation is critical. Sadly, most drivers will not stop for their victims. Without a humane witness to help, they will suffer and perish alone over hours, days, or even months from treatable injuries. A koala named Doreen and her joey, the size of a soft drink can, recently were hit and left to die twice in nine days at a Boundary Road black spot. Doreen did not survive, and two koalas have since perished in that same black spot. Fatalities would be higher but for residents prompting safe driving from the roadside and tree sitting at risk koalas. Just last week, I saved a koala on Boundary Road from death by helping him safely cross for the second time, but he will return, as that is his home range. Residents are passionate about their koalas, with two recent petitions attracting circa ten thousand signatures, and almost every driver continues to support our roadside volunteers. The community has prepared a submission identifying twenty key recommendations which we wish to formally table today for response. Our first key ask is to establish a collaborative working group to identify sustainable solutions. Secondly, we request exclusion fencing be extended. We realise that continual fencing is not suitable, but with restricted access crossing points, it is proven to be successful. Third is a dusk-to-dawn speed limit reduced for when they cross, successful in other areas. As well as the symptoms, the cause related to habitat destruction requires action. Recent development approvals on Pine Mountain and Eric Roads have further impacted them. Hence, our fourth ask is to review the code to ensure development approvals maintain adequate habitat and wildlife corridors. Fifth is increased lighting related to visibility. Sixth is regular monthly roadside maintenance during breeding season. Seventh is enhanced signage, including regular VMS updates and interchangeable signs through the Triangle of Death suburbs and along the Whitehill Ring Road. Eighth is education for council-employed and contracted drivers about wildlife safe driving during breeding season. And ninth is a review of the RSPCA ambulance service promoted on council signs, which is not always available 24/7 when our koalas most need help. It is devastating to see these innocent Australian icons die or cling to life after simply seeking a home, mate, or food. If you witnessed the carnage like I have, you would be appalled and demand action, despite political affiliation. Breeding season will continue for several months, and after one of the worst weeks locally for deaths and injuries, further trauma is likely. The community calls on council to take these nine actions as a matter of priority. We remind all that koalas are an endangered species, and as elected officers and designated officials, you all have a duty of care to protect them. We were concerned by recent comments made in this forum by the deputy mayor about working with koala societies to prevent overpopulation in Whitehill. Queensland Koala Society confirmed that they have not been engaged on this matter to date, but welcome contact, and they do not have concerns about koala overpopulation. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Bartlam. I now call on Counselor Davis to respond. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mister Chair, and thank you, Miss Barton, for taking the time to come in and share your thoughts. Thank you very much for providing the proposal that, as you said, will be tabled. There are a number of things here that cross portfolio areas, so it will be something that will need to be considered, and I thank you for outlining some of those ones that are of particular importance to you. Let me assure you that the Shriner Council is committed to the protection of these iconic and beautiful creatures, the koala, and as you referenced in the proposal, Brisbane City Council, and in your presentation, Brisbane City Council is undertaking a number of actions in order to prevent wildlife strikes along Boundary Road, and it's always devastating to hear of a wildlife strike, and we will continue to work with experts about ways that we can make best, rather, best practice, implement the things that they feel we can do to try and make sure that koalas can have safe crossing. I noticed that you spoke a bit about fencing, you're quite right, putting an exclusion fencing all the way along is not, has not been recommended by experts, but you will be pleased that we have asked for a further look to see whether there might be opportunity to have those short bursts of fencing along Boundary Road, but of course, as you would know, the fencing needs to lead to a safe crossing point, and that's why we've installed the world's first koala bridge across Boundary Road, because there's only one culvert along that, along that stretch of road. So please be assured that our council is looking at the things that you have raised with us. We do care about koalas. We do appreciate that the residents in and around Whitehill are very passionate about Whitehill Reserve and preserving the koalas in that space, and we will continue to work with experts so that we can get the best outcomes for that stretch of road and for the koalas. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Miss Bartlam, for coming in today. Point of order. Point of order, Counselor Griffiths?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. I move to suspend standing orders in order to move the following motion. Okay, that the Lord Mayor tables all reports, findings, recommendations, official research, and expert advice regarding fauna fencing along Boundary Road, Whitehill Reserve, at today's council meeting.
Seconded.
Just one moment. The motion itself has to be addressed for three minutes. Why the motion wasn't put on to... Yep, so three minutes, Counselor Griffiths, on why it wasn't tabled yesterday before one o'clock.
Well, it wasn't tabled yesterday before one o'clock because we just heard from this wonderful lady, Sharon Bart Bartlam, and her Whitehill Koala Society group, that there is action that is needed and wanted by the community. To hear today that people have to sit beside the road, koala sitting, as they say, sitting beside the road, waiting for wildlife to cross, and then providing or ensuring that it's safe to cross, would indicate that there are problems with koalas being killed on this road. We also know it's urgent because of the number of koala deaths we've had on this section of road. Twenty, over twenty koalas in four years. Twenty koalas have died in four years along this section of road, and since the Lord Mayor and Deputy Mayor and Counselor Cunningham introduced the reduction in speed to sixty, two koalas have been killed. There is not enough fencing along this road, and the group just said that. They've requested dusk-to-dawn speed limits. They've also requested a review code to maintain habitat and maintain the verge of the road.
Sorry, Counselor Griffiths, sorry, just one moment. I understand what you're saying, but you're not addressing the reason why you could not get the motion in before one o'clock.
I am. I'm telling you why it's urgent. We, I'm just giving you back all the reasons that we've just heard in relation to why we need to see these statistics. We need to see this information from the Lord Mayor, that Counselor Davies just said that they all depend on, that Counselor Adams has said that they depend on. We're wanting to see that information at today's meeting, so we can share it with the community, and we can go, this is the reason why there is no koala fencing along that road. This is the reason why the LMP has not acted. This is what we're asking for. It's not an unreasonable request. We're just asking for transparency in this council, by this mayor and his LMB councillors, who say they are concerned about koalas and fauna and flora death, but their actions don't demonstrate that. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. All those in favour of suspending standing motion, suspension of standing orders, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Counselor Griffiths, to your motion, please.
Yes, and there's, thank you, Mister Chair, and I thank the chamber for allowing me to speak to this. As we know, this has gone on for a number of months, even years, in relation to the deaths of koalas on this road.
Sorry, Counselor Griffiths, can you read your motion and have it seconded again, please? Because that was a different motion, that was around the three minutes, this is around the motion itself.
Okay, the motion is that the Lord Mayor tables all reports, findings, recommendations, official research, and expert advice regarding fauna fencing along Boundary Road, Whitehill Reserve, at today's council meeting.
Seconded.
We have a motion moved by Counselor Griffiths and seconded by Counselor Cassidy that the Lord Mayor tables all reports, findings, and recommendations, official research, and expert advice regarding fauna fencing along Boundary Road, Whitehill Reserve, at today's council meeting.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, Counselor Hutton.
Mister Chair, as per Section 42-2B of the meeting's local law, 2001, I move a procedural motion that the debate on this motion now, before the meeting, be adjourned and be placed at the end of the agenda of the next meeting.
Shut down, just for those of you in the...
Yep. I don't think we should have a debate. That's enough, Counselor Griffiths. Counselor Griffiths, Counselor Cassidy, stop now. A motion to move to the end of the meeting, moved by Counselor Hutton, end of the next meeting, sorry. Moved by Counselor Hutton and seconded by Counselor Mackay. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Sorry, division called by Counselor Cassidy, seconded by Counselor Collier. All those in favour say aye. Oh, sorry. Yeah, it's a division, my mistake. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Ring the bells.
Mister Chair, noes have it, the vote being seven in favour and nineteen against.
The ayes have it. Councillors, please resume your seat. Councillors, before question time starts, I'd like to make a statement regarding the use of the word liar in the chamber. I have reviewed a number of statements by previous chairs and deputy chairs in this chamber, and I have formed the opinion the use of the word liar is a reflection on councillors' and council officers' character, and is against the Queensland Government Council Code of Conduct under Section 2.1 and under Section 2.2, as well as Meeting's Local Law, Section 21.1 and Section 55.2. The use of the word liar in the form of a verb noun or adjective in past or present tense is unprofessional in this place, and as a result of this ruling, further use of the word will be ruled out of order. I will consider it an act of disorder, and I will ask you to withdraw your statement. Failing to do so may result in action being taken under Section 21.8 of the meeting's local law. Thank you, councillors. Are there questions of the Lord Mayor?
Point of order, sorry.
Sorry, point of order, Counselor Johnston.
Sorry to be technical, just so no one falls foul of this rule. Is the word lies appropriate, or is it all tenses of the word lie? Can you clarify that, please?
It's all and inclusive. Where was I up to? Question time. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Counselor Jenkinson?
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the council you lead has a strong track record investing in Brisbane suburbs, ensuring residents pay less in rates but get more services in return. Can you please update the chamber on the Shriner Council's recent investments into Brisbane libraries?
I will remind councillors that we are going to listen to question time, questions and answers in silence. We have guests in the chamber here, and you should all be on your best behaviour. Lord Mayor?
Well, it may not be important to opposition councillors to talk about libraries and important services in the suburbs. We heard the groan, but it is important to our side of the chamber, because this is a service that is valued greatly by the people of Brisbane. It is a service that I'm pleased to confirm today, that over the past twelve months, we have seen a million more people visit our libraries than the twelve months before. We are now up to five, well, five million visits in a twelve-month period, which equates to around fourteen thousand people a day visiting our libraries. And so it is very clear that while the opposition may not care about libraries, may groan about a question about libraries, that we are passionate about it, and we're determined to grow our library usership. We're determined to invest in our libraries, and we're intended to, we're determined to upgrade our libraries. Now, whether it is, whether it is the projects that is now underway up at Everton Park, Counselor Davis, where a brand-new library is being built, once again, in the suburbs, and not, not in the inner city, but in some of the more distant suburbs in Brisbane.
But... Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Counselor Griffiths and Counselor Collier, consider this a warning. I did say before question time started, we were going to listen in silence. Lord Mayor?
It's interesting, Mister Chair, that Counselor Griffiths, who has been the longest-serving councillor in this place, been here for twenty-one years, and was part of an administration that closed down libraries and sold them off to developers.
Councillors?
They closed down libraries, they closed down pools, and they sold them to developers. And he has the hide to interject.
Councillors, Lord Mayor?
We would never do that. We would never do that. We build new libraries, we invest in libraries, we upgrade libraries, and so whether it's Everton Park, or the many libraries that we've upgraded and improved in recent years, in the, in the time that I've been Lord Mayor, we've upgraded the Tuong Library, we've delivered a brand-new Bracken Ridge Library, we've upgraded the Ashgrove Stones Corner and Sandgate Libraries, we've expanded the Carandale Library, we have refurbished the Anala and Zilmia Libraries, and as I said, right now, we're investing in a brand-new Everton Park Library. We're also planning a new Intrapilly Library as well, one which...
Counselor Massey?
One which opposition councillors clearly oppose, which is disappointing, but the reality is, our ongoing investment is important, because the numbers of people using our libraries are growing, and we've seen consistent growth over the last four years, to the point where in the last twelve months, we had five million visits, which is fantastic. Now, the last time that we saw numbers of that scale was well before the pandemic, and so obviously, whether it's public transport use, whether it's library visitation, it was all impacted during the pandemic, but it's bouncing back strongly, and we're seeing those visitations improve, and we're investing accordingly. This year, we're investing eighty-two million dollars over twelve months into our libraries across the city. That's across the thirty-three libraries, plus the mobile library, that we're investing, and that investment is at record levels. You would not find that investment under a Labour administration, you would not find that investment under a Green administration, and you would certainly not find that investment under a Green Labour coalition of chaos, you would certainly not find that. The reality is, Labour has a record of selling off libraries and shutting them down. The Greens don't have a record at all on anything, except for opposing things, but we have a record of investing. In a cost-of-living challenge at the moment, it is those low and free, low-cost and free services that people are valuing more and more as well, and whether it's the libraries, whether it's the free and low-cost activities in parks, whether it's the two-dollar summer dips that we're bringing in this summer, we are focused on keeping costs down and providing many low-cost and free opportunities for our residents, because we know that it is important to them. These are services which exceed, in so many cases, the services provided by other councils. Councils where they pay higher rates, but they get a lower standard of service. We are proud of our libraries, we are proud of our parks, we are proud of our community events and festivals, and all of the low-cost things that we're able to deliver for our residents, because by investing in these things, we're investing in the things that really matter to the people of Brisbane. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? Counselor Collier?
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, you sensationally wrote to thousands of people weeks ago, saying their houses would be resumed by your council. Now you're telling Brisbane residents that the only way that they can save their houses from being resumed in the middle of a housing crisis is to make a formal submission in an overly confusing process.
Point of order, Mister Chair.
Point of order, Counselor Owen.
In accordance with the rules, a question should be asked succinctly and factually correctly. Could you please rule on this?
Thank you. Councillors, please. Counselor Owen, I don't uphold your point of order. Counselor Collier, you've got the call.
Lord Mayor, why won't you fix this debacle once and for all?
Lord Mayor?
Well, Mister Chair, first thing I need to do is point out inaccuracy in the question, because Counselor Collier clearly claimed that I wrote to thousands of residents when I did nothing of the kind. I did nothing of the kind. And so a basic fact like that, you would think, would be important, Mister Chair, but it's clear that those things aren't important to the Labour opposition. What I will say is this: Brisbane City Council does not resume homes for parks. Any suggestion otherwise is incorrect. Over the past several years that I've been Lord Mayor, we have created sixty new parks. How many homes have we resumed for those sixty new parks? I'm not aware of any. I'm not aware of any. And so we purchase homes through agreement of the owner, we identify locations where we approach residents to see if they're interested in selling, and where they are interested in selling them, we negotiate with them, but we do not resume park, homes for parks. And so this is a point that I've made repeatedly, this is a point that opposition councillors have repeatedly ignored and continue to concern and alarm residents unnecessarily, but to the point of the question, it's actually state government legislation that requires us to create an LGIP.
Just, just one moment, Lord Mayor. Counselor Griffiths and Counselor Collier, you are to listen to the response in silence. Consider this your second warning. Lord Mayor?
Thank you. As I was saying, it's state government legislation that requires all councils to create LGIPS, but they also set up the process whereby the formal approval for an LGIP can happen. Now, that involves bringing a submission through to this chamber, that it then involves sending that submission up to the state government for their, effectively their interest check or their review. It then involves a public submission period, which we're going through at the moment, but under state government requirements, once a plan has been put out for consultation, it can only be changed based on submissions that are received. It can only be changed based on submissions that are received. Now, Labour councillors, other opposition councillors will be well advised to work with their community to make sure the right submissions are in. Labour councillors are welcome themselves to put in submissions, as are all councillors, because I can say right now that under the state government requirements, if there is an issue that is of concern, but we don't receive a submission on it, we cannot change the plan by law. I've made it clear that we are absolutely willing to make many, many changes to this plan, is the reason we do consultation, but there must be a submission. That's the state government process that's been set up, and so rather than concerning people more, I would suggest that opposition councillors would work with their communities to make sure that submissions are put in, and that would make sure that they put in submissions as well, because if they have concerns as local councillors about a particular parkland proposal, or another aspect of the proposed LGIP, this is the opportunity to have their say. So that is the best thing that we can all do, work with local communities, make sure submissions are put in, but we wouldn't want a situation to occur where Labour councillors raise issues in political forums, or in the media, but then actually don't put in a submission on those issues. That's the important thing, the submission needs to go in. This is not because I'm asking for it, it's because the state government is asking for it, but it is the process which must be followed, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
A point of order.
Point of order, Counselor Cassidy.
I'm just seeking your guidance, Chair. Each and every time Counselor Collier has got up to ask a question since she's been councillor, Counselor Owen, doesn't do this for any other councillor, gets up and raises the exact same point of order that you've ruled out of order each and every time. At what point does that become an act of disorder? Just, just wondering.
Counselor Cassidy, as you would know, the act of disorder is at my discretion. Counselor Owen has asked a number of times, and has been ruled as not a point of order, not an appropriate point of order. They are in different meetings, thank you, Deputy Mayor. They are in different, they are in different meetings, but for the sake of the meeting, we're going to continue this meeting, but... Yes, thank you. Further questions? Sorry, Counselor Johnston?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Mister Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Was the last question from Counselor Collier?
It was.
And it must be from side to side?
It is, but no one...
Under the local laws, it must be on side to side. Not if anybody else is not standing.
Councillors, councillors, councillors on my right failed to stand. There was no one standing.
Thank you. I've got the call.
I have given Counselor Johnston the call.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, recently, your council released a... Lord Mayor, recently your council released a bus review that cuts the Yorongah West 105 bus loop. Yorongah residents have spoken up strongly and provided clear advice during consultation that they want to save the Yorongah West 105 loop. Will you commit today to retaining this important local bus service that connects Yorongah Rest residents with their major shopping centre at Indrapili?
Lord Mayor. Just one, just one gallery, please. This, this is a place of council business. And while I'm addressing the gallery, I would like to acknowledge that the Yorongah Probes Club are here today. Thank you for coming in. It's, it's been wonderful to meet you this morning at Morning Tea, but the Lord Mayor is going to be heard in silence. Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Well, first of all, and I've had to do this twice already in this meeting, the question includes some inaccuracies. Because we haven't in fact released a bus review. What we have released is a consultation report from the bus review. And so just to be clear about the process that we've been through, we put forward some initial proposals, we carried out public consultation. We included some really worthwhile and useful mapping tools that have never been used before so that people can understand the existing network and the changes proposed and drill down into the detail. We then received their feedback. That feedback is being considered, has been considered. And now we're in the process of working with the state government on the network going forward. Because ultimately, we are a partner in the delivery of bus services together with the state government and Translink. And any changes to the network must be approved and signed off by Translink. And so we're not at that stage yet. And so the idea...
Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Point of order councillor Johnson?
Yes, just on relevance, Mr Chair. My question was, will the Lord Mayor commit today to retain this important local bus service for Yorongah West residents? Not the state government, the Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Johnson. The Lord Mayor is explaining the circumstances in which we operate under. Lord Mayor.
And so as I was pointing out, this is a joint decision between the council and the state government. So I'm not in a position to comment on behalf of what the state government might approve or might not approve. But I know that this was a matter that came up in the Transport Committee this morning. And the petition was considered on this matter. And there were some other petitions relating to network review changes. And these are all things we're taking into consideration. And I think councillor Cassidy asked in the committee a question on what will happen now. And councillor Murphy made it very clear that all of these things are now being considered. The residents' feedback is being considered. And we will absolutely be taking that as a key consideration in our discussions with Translink when it comes to the formal network and the final version of it. But this is certainly not something that we're rushing into because we want to get it right. This is a process that we've taken the time on. We wanted to give residents plenty of opportunity to understand what is being proposed and provide their feedback. We're not rushing to make any kind of knee jerk decisions at this point in time. We are working collaboratively with Translink on the future network. But one thing is for certain, this network will involve a significant increase in investment from the Brisbane City Council in bus services. And in fact, when we, at the point where we first released our network changes...
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Just on relevance, my question was, and I understand what the Lord Mayor is saying, will the Lord Mayor commit today to counsel retaining the Yorongah West 105 service? So the Lord Mayor could answer that today for these residents.
Councillor Johnson, the Lord Mayor has plenty of time to respond to the question. Lord Mayor.
Well, Mr Chair, as I've already pointed out, I'm not in a position to make commitments on behalf of a joint decision making entity, which is council and Translink making a decision together. What I have said repeatedly is that we are taking the community feedback very seriously. We've taken that on board, we've witnessed the petitions. We are aware of the concerns that have been raised. And these are live discussions that are happening with Translink. And so in terms of what might happen going forward, I can't speculate at this point, or I can't commit the state government to a particular course of action. Because we've seen what happens in the past.
councillor Johnston?
We've seen what happens in the past. If I was to get up here today and say, oh, this particular service is in, another one is out, this government has stung the ratepayers of Brisbane time in, time out on bus service, saying, oh, if you want to commit to that one, you wear 100% of the costs. Rather than the usual cost sharing arrangement, they sting us and ratepayers with the cost. And so I'm not going to put ratepayers in that position. We're going to do this in an appropriate manner, we're going to do it in a considered manner. But Exhibit A is the Marone City Glider. Now, this is something that we championed. And the state government said, oh, it's a great service, but you can pay for it. $6 million a year. And by the way, the state government takes $2 million in revenue from the service and doesn't put a cent in to the service. So I'm not going to fall for that this time. And that is why when we proposed the Gold City Glider, when we proposed other network improvements and changes, we are doing this in good faith, but we need the support of the state government as well. Because bus services right now are funded 25% by Brisbane City Council and 75% by the state government. And so by all means, we'll work through this process.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
But we're going to do it the right way.
councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee, councillor Cunningham. Councillor Cunningham, last week, we saw councillor Cassidy's ill-informed and ill-conceived version of accounting and economics on full display, which can only be described as an epically embarrassing budget blunder. Can you please take five minutes out of your day to educate the opposition leader on how to navigate budget documents?
Councillors, please. councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you very much through you to councillor Owen for the question. I know I don't need to go through, through things with councillor Owen, but it is very clear, Mr Chair, after last week's debate in this chamber, that councillor Cassidy is completely clueless when it comes to reading the budget papers. Councillor Cassidy spent a lot of time in my budget information session this year, Mr Chair, which I absolutely welcome. We had a free flowing session, there was plenty of opportunities for questions to myself, as well as senior officers, of course, including the Chief Financial Officer. The opposition did have a curious line of questioning though, such as wanting to know the breakdowns of various items in the statements of our commercialised business units, et cetera, et cetera. All questions they're entitled to ask, Mr Chair, of course, and which could be answered either in the room or later on, on notice. But after hearing the debate last week, perhaps, Mr Chair, it would have been better for councillor Cassidy to ask questions like, what is cash flow? Or what is capital? Because first up, we had councillor Cassidy's desperate attempt to claim that cash flow changes were the same as an adopted change to the budget and that there was a mystery $85 million missing. What nonsense, Mr Chair. After being absolutely schooled in question time by the Lord Mayor, he then doubled down in E N C, in the E N C debate rather, with what could only be described, Mr Chair, as a bizarre and mind boggling contribution. It's totally understandable for a councillor in this place to not be across the minutia of every detail of what's in the financial reports. They are required to be presented in a certain way as per state government and Queensland Order Office guidance. And not all councillors have experience in accounting, absolutely. But what I don't understand is why someone who purports himself to be a serious figure in this city would, instead of asking legitimate questions in good faith first, just jump to falsehoods to try and drum up a media story. He didn't just stop with his fairy tale about the cash flow statement either. He kept on digging. He kept digging, Mr Chair, and things only got worse and worse for councillor Cassidy through you. Not content with being exposed for misrepresenting the budget review, he then went on to reveal he didn't know what capitalised expenses even meant. The budget presented in June by the Lord Mayor was a $4.3 billion budget, Mr Chair. But of this, councillor Cassidy said last week, and I quote, "Well, he didn't talk about the figure of capitalised expenses, which is writing down and writing off assets of $1.5 billion", end quote. He also said, "You can't go out and say the budget is a $4.3 billion budget when in reality the operations were $2.3 billion minus the capitalised expenses, minus write offs and write downs", end quote. Mr Chair, our capitalised expenses are just that. Expenses to fund capital. Capital means road upgrades, it means new playgrounds for the residents and children of Brisbane. It means major transport infrastructure for our city and it means new libraries. Throughout the budget book, we see projects broken down by revenue and two types of expenses. Mr Chair, the two different types are operating expenses, things like ongoing service delivery and capital expenses, which is for building new and improved infrastructure. Depreciation is an operating expense and it even has its own line item, just a few lines above capitalised expenses, Mr Chair. It's all there on page 12 of the budget book and on page two of the first budget review. I have barely scratched the surface, Mr Chair, of the inaccuracies from what councillor Cassidy has set. At one point, it seemed like figures were just being plucked from all over the place. And he just doesn't really care about the facts. They are tied and out of touch, Mr Chair, and they are absolutely clueless. The residents of Brisbane should be very worried about the prospect of a Green Labour Coalition of Chaos leading our city and trying to manage...
Time has expired. Thank you. Further questions?
Point of order.
Yep.
Just saying, I was...
Point of order councillor Griffiths?
Yeah, I was ready for the next question. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Oh, it's not a point of order?
No.
No. Sorry. Your question councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. On Saturday, I learned that two house blocks, so my question is to the mayor, on Saturday, I learned that there are two house blocks at 37 and 39 Rachel Street in Maruka have come on to the market. I've been advised council had previously tried to purchase these blocks using the bushland acquisition fund, but without success. Both blocks are joined Cracknell Gully Park and are high in ecological significance and are zoned as koala habitat. Neighbours tell me, and they showed me a video, there is a mother koala and her joey on site now. Will you commit today to, to direct officers to negotiate to purchase a site using the bushland acquisition fund? Lord Mayor.
Lord Mayor.
Well, Mr Chair, I want to congratulate councillor Griffiths on an excellent question. It is a nice change and one that's not political for a change as well. Look, I've got some good news for you councillor Griffiths. Cabinet has already pre-approved the officers negotiating for the acquisition of this property. And in fact, we have, like we do with parklands, we identify areas that could be suitable for acquisition through the bushland program or through parkland. And then when there's an opportunity that arises, we move into gear. And so while we have previously attempted to acquire these properties, that didn't work out at the point in time, they didn't end up agreeing to the sale. But now that these properties have been listed for sale, it's full steam ahead in terms of us gearing up our efforts. I would love to see these two properties purchased. This is exactly what the bushland levy is used for. This is, this particular land makes good sense. It is right adjoining a massive area of bushland in a conservation reserve. These are the kinds of blocks of land that we want to see purchased through the program. And so councillor Griffiths, I can tell you, we have already made the decision in Cabinet that we've given the officers authority to go and negotiate. And that is a process that is underway at the moment. We'd really love to see these properties purchased by council.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? councillor Mackay?
Thank you for recognising me there, Chair. My question's to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, the Shrima Council's upgrade of Victoria Park Barronburn is creating more to see and do for Brisbane residents. Can you please update the chamber on the latest event in Victoria Park Barronburn held over the weekend?
councillor Davis?
Well, thank you very much, Mr Chair, and through you, can I thank councillor Mackay for the question, who I know had a fantastic time at Victoria Park on Sunday, I think you were there councillor. Because there's so much that's going on at Victoria Park at the moment. Since reopening as a public park in 2021, we've seen visitation increased by 250% and more than 120,000 people in attendance over 275 events that have been held in the park. We've just had another Green Heart Fair, which we've hosted. We've hosted La Festival and of course, we have Brisbane Festival coming up shortly. But I'm excited to share with the chamber the latest from Victoria Park's inaugural Outdoor Adventure Festival that was held this past weekend. The Outdoor Adventure Festival is all about embracing Brisbane's active outdoor lifestyle. The free event showcased a plethora of sports, activities, workshops, live music and food from across Brisbane. It was great to be joined by the Lord Mayor and his family for the official opening on Saturday morning, where we were treated to a high octane BMX stunt show that really got the crowd revved up. There were tricks, there were flames, it was a real heart starter demonstration. As you know, Mr Chair, Victoria Park will be home to the Brisbane 2032 Olympics BMX Freestyle Events. And the incredible level of skill of these young champion riders from Brisbane means we might very well see them wearing the green and gold in nine years' time. There was something for everybody at the Outdoor Adventure Festival. There were three zones, there was the base camp, the Great Outdoors and the Sanctuary, which catered not only for those who had high energy levels, but also for those who were looking for a more relaxed activity to enjoy. At the base camp, attendees got to enjoy a bite from a food truck, some coffee or craft beer and listen to live music while enjoying talks and workshops from some very big names. We had Outback Mike from Alone Australia, who showed off his handcrafted canoe and shared his secrets of survival and adventure. And I know that councillor Mackay was a bit starstruck in meeting Outback Mike. He bought a copy of his book and I understand, Mr Chair, councillor Mackay's seven-year-old daughter is reading that as a bedtime story at the moment. We had Australian Ninja Warrior champion Ben Paulson, who was there while sharing valuable insights and essential tips from the rigorous world of Ninja Warrior, which was a big hit with the attendees. We also heard from Natasha Price and Adam Shepherd, two incredible athletes who were kind enough to share their experiences about overcoming adversity and their insights into the world of elite adaptive sports. And we got up close and personal with some native wildlife, some snakes, some lizards, birds, and even a crocodile, all of which were accounted for at the end of the day. At the Sanctuary, attendees were able to participate in a range of activities that were more on the relaxing side of the scale while getting outdoors and connecting with nature. There was yoga, pilates, fitness classes and even a horticultural workshop. At the Great Outdoors area, there were activities for all ages and abilities to run through the weekend, like the BMX stunt show I mentioned earlier. But for those not quite brave enough to attempt those daring stunts yet, we offered BMX skills, a BMX skills clinic where attendees got to learn the fundamentals under the guidance of expert instructors. And while I was there, I had a chat to a young dad who brought his little one along. She would have been three at most, so probably up to my knee. And along with her, this tiny little bike without any training wheels at all. And she was there to do the BMX clinic. So it was fantastic. It was an event where children from, you know, this high to, you know, to adults, I'm sorry?
Knee high to a grasshopper.
Knee high to a grasshopper. Yeah, so it was, it was something for everybody on the, on the day. But I would say, Mr Chair, there was just so much to see and do over the weekend. It was an event like... It was an event like none other that we've had in Brisbane before. As I said, it was the inaugural event, and we had several thousand people turning up for this event, and we were excited about that. I can tell you that the feedback was that people will be back next year. They'll be sharing what was available with their friends. In fact, as I was leaving, a family came along, like several families, that were going to enjoy the day and have a birthday party at the same time. So the kids were very, very excited. They were looking at the rock climbing wall, they were looking at the inflatable Nimjuk Warrior course, and I know that that was going to be a great time for them. Mr Chair, again, it was a huge success, and I would encourage everybody to come along next year.
Councillor Davis, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, when the Metro business case was released in 2017, the cost-benefit ratio was 1.91. That was for a metro that was costing $944 million and a bus network carrying millions more passengers than it is today. The metro then also included an underground cultural centre bus station. Now that project has doubled in price and has been scaled back significantly and has a delayed opening. What is the new cost-benefit ratio for your metro?
Lord Mayor.
I am glad, Mr Chair, that councillor Cassidy has finally read the Metro business case. Because we know that there's been a lack of understanding about the project for many years, and hopefully he has discovered what a fantastic and important project it is. Now, obviously, with things like the pandemic, passenger numbers change over time. But I have every expectation that that is a temporary impact on the network and not a permanent impact. And with the population growing and Brisbane now being the fastest-growing capital city in Australia, we know that the passengers will be there, and that will only grow between now and 2032, when we host the Olympic and Paralympic Games. So a temporary blimp for the pandemic is not something that would stop us building a project that needs to be done. But I would say that whatever changes have occurred in terms of passenger numbers and also costs to the project, they are certainly not what councillor Cassidy has said. I heard him say just before that the project has doubled. He mustn't have been listening when councillor Murphy explained very clearly what the project budget was. Now, I'm happy to go through again, because this is an important point. If you're talking about a BCR, a business case, you need to know what the cost of the project is. And so we've heard repeated incorrect figures. Someone said in the chamber yesterday, last week, that it was $2.1 billion. It is not $2.1 billion. So the original Brisbane Metro proposal started off at $1.5 billion. The project was then modified, it went to $944 million. The decision to go fully electric vehicles took the project up to $1.244 billion. So that was a cost associated with higher costs of vehicles because they were fully electric and required various charging infrastructure and other support. There's then been cost escalation, which every major project is facing. The current contract... Well, the current cost of Brisbane Metro is $1.4 billion. And so that is the project cost. A separate project altogether is the Gabba Station. That is not part of the current project of Brisbane Metro. And in fact, based on the state government's timeframes, that is a project that will be delivered much, much later. People will be riding on Brisbane Metro long before the Gabba Metro Station is built. And so that is part of a separate project. But the reality is, the cost of Brisbane Metro as of today is $1.4 billion. Is the project under pressure? Yes, it is. Absolutely. We're seeing a situation where month-on-month, construction prices across the industry, whether it's building a block of units, or whether it's building a road upgrade, or whether it's building a public transport project, those costs are under pressure. There's no doubt about that.
Point of order, Chair.
And we're seeing that.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, my question specifically, on relevance, Chair, my question specifically was about the cost-benefit ratio. I understand those costs have changed, but the question was about what the current ratio is.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. I don't uphold your point of order. I believe the Lord Mayor is answering the question.
And I can tell councillor Cassidy that based on all of our understanding, the cost-benefit ratio, or the benefit-cost ratio of metro is always going to be above one. It is always going to be a positive benefit project. Now, we can't say the same for Cross River Rail, because they could never get it to one, even with the old patronage numbers and the old cost numbers. And so councillor Cassidy is quite happy to support investment in Cross River Rail with a BCR of less than one and falling, yet he questions a project that clearly has a positive cost-benefit ratio. This is the sad situation we see and the hypocrisy we see. And so we will continue to invest in Brisbane Metro because it is a game-changing, transformative public transport project. It is one that the state Labor Government supports, it is one that the federal Labor Government supports, it is one that Infrastructure Australia supports. Everyone whose opinion is worth listening to thinks Brisbane Metro is a fantastic project, and there's only one person that hasn't gotten on board yet. I'm disappointed. I'm not angry, I'm disappointed. It'd be nice if you supported Brisbane Metro. Just... You know what?
Councillors, we're going to listen to the Lord... Councillors, councillor Murphy, we're going to listen to the Lord Mayor in silence.
The deputy premier came on board the metro vehicle just last Friday. And he loves it! He absolutely loves it, the second time he's been on the vehicle. And, you know, take a leaf out of Stephen Miles' book.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, the Brisbane Fashion Festival has now wrapped up for another year. Can you please update the chamber on the economic benefits of this event, of an event like this, and how it pays dividends for Brisbane business?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Hutton. Yes, last week, we saw another five days of events driving the Brisbane economy. Now, in its 16th year, the Brisbane Fashion Festival returned once again to King George Square and City Hall, welcoming more than 3,000 fashion fanatics across an array of runway show events and activations. It has grown to be an absolute staple in the city's events calendar and one that is growing from strength to strength, recognised widely as Queensland's largest and most prestigious fashion event, and one that we, as the Shrinna Council, are very, very proud to support year after year. After selling out in 2022, this year's event was even bigger, with a jam-packed programme of events and activations spanning five days, bringing the streets to life with runway shows, foodie events, charity fundraisers, and some of our best local, national, and Next Gen designers on show. And it's not just about the fashion on the runway, as fantastic as it was. It's about supporting the whole industry behind fashion, and that message certainly cut through last week. The fashion industry is a serious business. Nationally, it employs over half a million people and generates more than $27.2 billion annually. And while there is big business to compete with, there is undeniably a big shift towards supporting local talent and buying local. It's through platforms like the Brisbane Fashion Festival that give our incredible homegrown talent their chance to share the stage with some of the heavy hitters in the fashion industry and reach new audiences right across Australia and around the world. As the first of the season launched for the spring-summer collections to the rest of the country, the Brisbane Fashion Festival has certainly carved out its place in the runway calendar. This year's programme featured an incredible line-up of more than 50 designers, presenting a total of 460 unique, inspiring, and must-have looks for the season. There's a growing list of supporters and sponsors behind the event, and this year, I was thrilled to see even more of our emerging local designers on show. Twenty-four local young up-and-comers took part in the Next Gen Group Show on Wednesday night, and it did not disappoint. Students and graduates from Brisbane's fashion colleges and universities blew everybody away, showcasing their creative and innovation fashion wares on the big stage. Not quite sure if I would be ready to wear some of them, but they were definitely innovative. A fantastic opportunity for them to gain some experience and exposure, and of course, make new connections in the Brisbane fashion community. And that's exactly what it is all about: building Brisbane's creative community and building Brisbane's reputation as a place that inspires and connects people to do great things. Each year, this event creates an enormous ripple effect on the local designers, on the retailers, on the creatives, right through to our bars, restaurants, and hotels right throughout the city. It gives a huge boost to our local economy. This event alone supports hundreds of jobs and drives upwards of $5 million into Brisbane's local economy in just the three short days or evenings that it takes place. And that is no small feat. It's events like these that help drive Brisbane's global reputation as a major events city. From world-class sporting events like FIFA Women's World Cup, the NRL Magic Round, the PGA Golf that's coming up later in the year, carrying us right through our green and gold runway to 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. It really is about that booming live music theatre performance scenes, including local favourites like Big Sound, which is returning in October. I know councillor Howard's getting her pom-poms out for ZZ Death Ray. And of course, not to miss the Brisbane Festival, which kicks off on Friday with a bang and Saturday night with an explosion over the city. Hundreds of theatre, music, and art performances spread right across the city, and hopefully all councillors know where their suburb serenades are going to be for their locals to enjoy some fantastic music in their suburban streets. Our quiet achievers in terms of events for the city are our business events. More and more people and businesses from across Australia and around the world are turning to Brisbane. Working with key industry partners, Brisbane has secured more than 70 new business events over the next few years, generating an estimated $71 million in economic benefit to our city. It's all about creating a year-round calendar of events that support local business, create jobs, and drive our local economy. I want to take this opportunity to have a big congratulations to Lindsay Bennett and the entire Brisbane Fashion Festival team on another outstandingly successful year. And we look forward to continuing the support of this event and many others exactly lying across the city for years to come to make the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and that ends question time. Councillors, we'll move on to the considerate... Point of order, councillor Collier.
I move that the motion currently lying on the table come off the table for debate. Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags on the Story Bridge.
Seconded. We have a procedural motion to take the motion regarding the flags being flown on the Story Bridge off the table. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division call by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 20 against.
The motion has been lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 21st of August 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday the 21st of August 2023 be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Before I go on, I just wanted to table the annual financial statements of the Museum of Brisbane and flag also that, given that, you know, we've come past the end of the financial year and all of the annual reports and statements are being finalised at this point in time, there'll be other statements coming through in the coming weeks as well for different controlled entities. So that includes Museum of Brisbane and other council-controlled entities. So I do table this statement, the annual financial statement. I wanted to thank the Chair of the Board, Ian Clug, the patron of the Museum of Brisbane, Sally Ann Atkinson, the new CEO of Museum of Brisbane, Zoe Graham, for the work that they've done. And obviously, the Museum of Brisbane continues to go from strength to strength and grow visitation numbers and, most importantly, showcase the fascinating place that we call home with a very unique offering for the people of Brisbane and visitors. Last night, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place were lit up in red, blue, and white to support the Legacy Appeal Week. Legacy supports over 40,000 partners and children of veterans who have given their lives or health serving our country. Legacy Week Appeal has been running since the 1940s, and it's a time for Australians to show their support for this important charity. Tonight, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, will be lit up in purple to support International Overdose Awareness Day. And this campaign raises awareness of overdose, which is one of the world's top public health crises. And we've seen some alarming figures coming out of a number of parts of Queensland in recent times on overdoses as well. On Wednesday night, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in yellow to support the eve of Daffodil Day, run annually by the Cancer Council. Daffodil Day supports all Queenslanders living with cancer, including informing them of the support services that can be offered for themselves as well as their families and support networks. Thursday is the eve of National Wattle Day, and wattle being... The wattle being our national floral emblem. That reminds me that we have a community consultation underway at the moment to choose a new Brisbane floral emblem. The Brisbane Wattle is one of those in the mix at the moment, but there are three others as well. But we'll be lighting up the bridge, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place in green and gold, which are our national colours, which are based on the wattle, the golden wattle. So, and which we obviously see when it comes to our Australian sports uniforms in many different forms in places like the Olympics, FIFA Women's World Cup, and so many others. On Thursday night, the Sandgate Town Hall and City Hall will be lit up in red, blue, and white, as well as yellow, to recognise Malaysia's National Day. This day is celebrated on the 31st of August each year, which is also known as Freedom Day. And congratulations to Brisbane's Malaysian community and on that special day. Last week, there was some legislation amendments introduced in the Queensland Parliament giving the valuer general more flexibility to cancel land valuations after natural disasters. Now, this is a debate that we had last year following the devastating floods, where we saw old figures being used, pre-flood figures being used. And that included suburbs like Fairfield and Rockleigh, which were obviously very heavily hit by flood. Yet they experienced an average valuation increase of 24.5% in the case of Fairfield. And Rockleigh...
Councillor Johnston.
And Rockleigh experiencing a 20% increase in land valuations. We called very clearly for the valuations to be held off and redone based on the post-flood outcomes. The state government refused, but now we have seen them change the legislation to give them the flexibility to do so if they choose. So while it's not... It wasn't a good outcome after the last flood. If and when we see future flooding, they have the flexibility now to cancel a scheduled valuation or to hold it off or to hold it over based on a natural disaster that may have impacted on land values. And so I think that is a good thing. It's not exactly what we wanted, but the fact that this legislation change has been made, I think is a very positive thing and gives the flexibility that's necessary. You'll remember that the big... You'll remember that the big, the big push at that time was the state government increasing land tax. And so they wanted to get that land tax revenue in and they refused to cancel the valuation because they knew those valuations were increasing rapidly and their land tax take would increase rapidly. We have worked really hard to make sure that our costs across Brisbane on average are half the rate of inflation. And that is not something that we've seen the state government give appropriate consideration to. But anyway, they've got the, they've got the power to do it now and that is a good thing. Item A is the lease of land at 1300 Nudgy Road, Nudgy Beach. And this is for a renewal of a lease at Nudgy Beach. And the lease is with Queensland Recycling Holdings for construction and demolition waste recycling purposes. Queensland Recycling Services Holdings have held the lease since 1995. The new lease is for another three years with amendments made to the lot area to correspond with the state government's environmental approval for the facility. Additionally, Queensland Recycling Holdings requested the new lease to be entered in by a different legal entity. It is the same operations, the same operator, but a different legal entity. As a result of these changes, councillors seeking an exemption from the local government minister to renew the lease without going to tender. Site remediation and make-good obligations at the time when the site may return to council are included as part of the lease arrangement. Item B is the sublease of premises for the Police Beet in Adelaide Street, the city. This is something which we're very proud to support. Many people may not be aware that we've co-located the Police Beet and also our city safe security centre. It's in the same lease centre and we provide a sublease to the Queensland Police so that they can operate a Police Beet there. Now, in these times of community safety concerns and challenges with crime, particularly youth crime, it is very interesting to point out that the only reason the Police Beet is in the heart of the city is because we pay for the lease. We pay for the lease for the Police Beet, not the state government, we pay for it. But obviously, it would be a very concerning situation to see the Police Beet removed from the city. So it's something we're continuing to subsidise through this arrangement. Obviously, the city safe facility is our responsibility. We do work closely with the police on the city safe facility, but the, the Police Beet is quite clearly a state government responsibility and we cover the vast majority of the costs of the lease of that. So we'll continue that. We sublease to the police at $1 per annum, so peppercorn rent, which is a good outcome for them, but also a good outcome for the community who get an increased police presence in the heart of the city and help us keep Brisbane as safe as possible. Councillor's current lease on the premises is due to expire on the 31st, sorry, the, the proposed lease is for initial term to 31st of January 2025, when there's an option for a further two years and that is due to expire the 31st of January 2027. So I assume all councillors will support this lease going forward. Item C, the minutes of the Audit Committee meeting held on 8th of June 2023, they're presented in line with the City of Brisbane regulation. Our independent audit committee reviews councillors' internal audit reports on operational risk and control measures. As the minutes set out, the committee received updates from the CEO, CFO, Chief Internal Auditor and the Queensland Audit Office. We work really closely with the Queensland Audit Office and we appreciate the ongoing advice, independent advice from this committee to help us make sure. We're constantly updating our processes, we're constantly managing our risks and this committee does a really good job for us in managing all types of risks. We also have focused in particular in this meeting on cybersecurity and natural disaster management and recovery. I commend these reports to the chamber.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on these three items and just ask that, I think it's C, the Audit Committee report be taken, seri item for, for voting.
For voting, thank you, noted.
So yeah, thanks very much. So three very simple, business-as-usual, standard items that have to come to council on the agenda today. We've heard from the Lord Mayor about a lease, two leases that were up for renewal, had to come to council and an Audit Committee report that, as the Lord Mayor said, is required, the minutes are required to come to council by legislation. Apparently, apparently, this administration is far too busy today to talk about koala fencing or to debate a motion about flying the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander flags on the Story Bridge. The business of council is apparently too packed today with these three very simple items. I think the Lord Mayor spent about five minutes. They haven't got their lines ready, that's right, so they have to delay it by not just at the end of this meeting, but the end of the next meeting these days. Not a lot of accountability and transparency under the LMP, which brings me to, the first two items, of course, we'll support.
Councillor Cassidy, please continue.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. The first two items will support, of course, those leases, two important leases. And when it comes to accountability and transparency, the report of the Audit Committee should be given as soon as practicable. That's what's there, it needs to be given to, presume, ENC, as the delegate of council to make decisions after a meeting. This one's three months after its meeting. These are, we're not talking, we're not talking the reports that were attached at the meeting and a fulsome record or a Hansard-style record of what happened at the Audit Committee. This is a precis of what happened at the meeting. This is very, very light minutes indeed, but this is what we've come to expect from this administration, shutting down debate, gagging debate, pushing debate off, not bringing, not bringing fulsome information to this council chamber for accountability and transparency. So we're supposed to, as councillors, tick off on this. That's what the Lord Mayor is asking us to do with very limited information contained within these minutes at all. We're told in there that there's, an update was provided on the progress of Queensland Audit Office reports recently tabled in the State Parliament, but they're, they're not there and there's no details of that. We're supposed, supposed to accept one sentence from the Lord Mayor today about that. The committee discussed updates on corporate rules requiring review, but what are they? What corporate rules are required to be reviewed and what is the process and which council is going through? And the question is why? Is that a legislative requirement, just like these meetings are to happen? Perhaps some, some, some issue has been identified, that corporate rules are out of date or, or someone was doing something wrong? We don't know. We know that this year, and councillor Strunk spoke about this a couple of weeks ago, the bushfire season, we know is going to be particularly bad this year. And the committee had a report on the approach to disaster recovery, but we don't see there what the plan is. We had a presentation, a high-level presentation about that. This is a serious risk, not just to the operations of council, but to each and every person that lives in the city of Brisbane. We know it's going to be particularly bad, but what is that approach to disaster recovery? We know from our experience on the ground in communities that were flooded, the LMP's approach to disaster recovery was a disaster itself. And that was a human-made disaster in their response to that flood in February 2022, in the lack of resources that were available to council officers trying to respond. We all remember that, the lack of sandbag machines, the lack of road closure equipment, the lack of staff on the ground because they've all been contracted out to contractors now. We really worry about council's ability to respond to these bushfire disasters because of the political decisions of this LMP administration in gutting council's workforce. There's still, and on floods, there are still outstanding recommendations from the 2022 Brisbane City Council flood review. They're being talked about at this Audit Committee, but no detail is being brought to this council chamber about those outstanding, outstanding items in the flood review. We're still dealing with that aftermath, 18 months now. We're, we're at, beyond the 18-month mark after that and we certainly worry what's on the horizon for people who live in Brisbane in these summer months with the bushfire disaster looming now. The last item in the report is other matters, a very vague term, of course, and there was a discussion in there, at least as a dot point, that talks about procurement. And there's not a whole lot of detail in that section of the report, but we can see that there are some very significant issues around global risks, issues and impacts like supply chain disruption and labour shortages on that agenda. They were just the agenda items, not the discussion. And some of the solutions that the Audit Committee came up for the LMP administration. But here's a suggestion, Lord Mayor, maybe start making things here in Brisbane, maybe bring jobs back here to Brisbane. Instead of shipping off manufacturing jobs to China to build buses over there, why don't we start building buses here in Brisbane again? They giggle along, the LMP, they think it's a joke.
Councillor Cunningham, shimming your comments to the Lord Mayor, we're through the chair.
Of course.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps start making more playground equipment here in Brisbane rather than having those supply chain issues that we've seen over the last few years where playground equipment is imported from Europe and from Asia and other places to Brisbane. And then we see those supply chain issues exacerbated and projects delayed. And lo and behold, this year's budget has a $300 million carryover of projects that aren't able to be delivered by this LMP administration. What a surprise. That one wasn't talked about in the Audit Committee. That's the one they leave out. You know, our, our approach to these documents, to these processes and approaches will be very different in administration from the LMP. Under Labor and a Tracy Price, Lord Merrillty and a Labor administration, we would make things here in Brisbane, we would be more open and accountable and transparent. And they laugh away about openness and accountability and transparency because they don't think that's a very serious issue, do they? They've been there, they've been there for 20 years, 20 long years. And, and you see, Chair, you see, the, the letter issue that we've been discussing for the last three weeks is just a symptom of that bigger problem of this LMP administration being in there too long. Another symptom of that bigger problem of this LMP administration being there too long is when we talk about accountability and transparency, here in council, they laugh it off. And that's the difference between the LMP and a Labor administration.
Councillors, bit of shush. Further speakers to the ENC. So you know, items will now put...
Mr Chair.
Oh, sorry, councillor Cunningham. Sorry, I missed you, sorry, my apologies.
That's okay, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on items A, B and C, just very briefly to add to the debate and clear things up for the chamber. So item A is for the renewal of a lease of land at Nudgy Beach to Queensland Recycling Holdings, or QRH, for construction and demolition waste material recycling purposes. Since 1995, Queensland Recycling Holdings have held this lease at the site. The lease, this new lease, rather, is for a total of three years, Mr Chair. The area QRH occupies corresponds with the area identified in the environmental approval, which was granted by the Queensland Government for the facility back in 2001. It includes an additional area in the south-eastern corner of the site, which is not included in the current lease area. Since the initial lease was granted, the land has been reconfigured and the new lease is proposed to be over the whole of the land to match that area occupied by QRH. For commercial reasons, QRH have requested to enter the new year, the new three-year lease under a different related entity being Queensland Recycling P proprietary Limited. To facilitate this, the submission seeks an exemption from the local government minister, which is necessary. We've also allowed for make-good obligations and the site remediation as part of that lease. To item B, Mr Chair, this is to grant the new sublease for the Adelaide Street Police Beet, as the Lord Mayor described. Council leased part of the ground floor of 65 to 69 Adelaide Street in the CBD, which is occupied by our city safe team. Excuse me, Mr Chair. Council's lease is funded through the Queen Street Mall, special levy. The ground floor location and access being available, available, thank you, from both Adelaide Street and Burnett Lane meets the requirements of the Police Beet. Council's leasehold tenure over the premises has been renewed and this item for a new sublease for QPS via the Department of, this is a new sublease for QPS via the Department of Housing and Public Works. The proposed rental for the sublease is just $1 if they demand it. We fully support and encourage the continued presence of the police in our mall and we're happy, more than happy in fact, to offer that peppercorn rent. The proposed lease is for an addition, initial term to 31st of January 2025 with a further option of two years expiring one day prior to council's head lease over the premises. The City of Brisbane Regulation 2012 provides an exemption from the requirement to go to public tender for the disposal of an interest in an asset where the disposal is to a government agency. There you go. Council's current lease at the premises is due to expire on the 31st of January 2027. Finally, Mr Chair, just on item C, we have a rigorous audit regime in this city with independent oversight through the Audit Committee and of course, the Queensland Audit Office. Frankly, Mr Chair, it would be far greater concern to me if there were no issues that were identified by auditors. We receive frank and fearless advice and that is exactly how it should be. Our Audit Committee comprises of independent members appointed through a totally external recruitment process. Further, our internal audit process brings a systematic, disciplined and risk-based approach to evaluate and improve the effectiveness of risk management, internal control and governance processes here at Brisbane City Council, and I commend this report to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham. Are there any further speakers? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item B and can I ask that it take seri item for voting, please?
Noted, thank you.
This is the sublease of the premises at 65 to 69 Adelaide Street, the Police Beet. And as the Lord Mayor said, we're very proud to support, the support of the QPS within the city centre as well. Having our Police Beet stationed centrally and co-locating with our city safe rooms is incredibly important and effective way to keep our city and its residents, visitors and workers safe. It operates 24/7. We monitor 142 CCTV cameras across the network and 101 of those located in the CBD. So since 1984, the city safe network has, we continue to invest in and work closely with the QPS to help prevent crime, respond to issues quickly and make sure everyone feels safe at all times of day and night in our city centre. And by having these offices centrally located and in constant contact with our city safe team, a large number of these incidents were able to be de-escalated or prevented entirely. Over the last year, we've had our CCTV network actually critical in capturing over 23,000 incidents. So it is great to see the QPS on hand to help us with that. And it's not just crime and emergencies, it's also about planning ahead, preparing for events, knowing when there'll be large crowds through the city, major events where we know we need to alert people moving through particular locations as well, and being able to consult with the QPS in advance and make sure our network of cameras are monitored. We are better prepared and more alert for anything that may arise as well. So we've worked with the local Police Beet stations, including Adelaide Street Police Beet, Roma Street and the Valley, with our dedicated networks for many, many years. Brisbane is known as a safe, clean and friendly city and there's no denying however that people are getting concerned about the crime that is rising recently and we will continue to closely work with the QPS, support the CBD Police Beet and make sure our city can continue to be safe for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there any further speakers? See no one rising. Lord Mayor, write a reply.
Just briefly, Mr Chair, councillor Cassidy continues to suggest incorrectly, and I think he claimed that the workforce of council had been gutted. It's just absolutely and patently not the case. And in fact, I know my Brisbane City Council history very well and I know that the two major outsourcing operations that occurred, actually no, three major outsourcing operations were all done by Labor. Number one, outsourcing the ferry operations to a private contractor rather than Brisbane City Council employees. Number two, outsourcing the rubbish collection to a private contractor. And number three, outsourcing the grass cutting to a private contractor. And so I need to correct the record, the biggest outsources ever in the history of Brisbane City Council have been the Labor administrations who did all of those things. And that was their mentor, Jim Sawley. Their mentor, Jim Sawley, did all three of those things. And so I just need to correct the record. We've, we obviously have continued those existing arrangements. Why? Because they provide value for ratepayers. You won't, you won't hear Labor admitting that they provide value for ratepayers, but that is the reality. But it was them that did the major outsourcing of council service.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We'll now put item A of the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item B of the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it.
To be seconded.
Division called by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Please ring the bells. Councillors, a bit of quiet please. Clarks, please read the result.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being unanimously in favour.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillors, please return to your seats so we can vote on item C. All right, I'll now put item C of the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the result.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 20 in favour and 7 against.
Item C has passed. Thank you, councillors. Please return to your seats. Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Chair, I move the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, 22nd of August 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting, held on Tuesday, the 22nd of August 2023, be adopted. Deputy Mayor, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Business hub, busy as ever. Lots of drop-ins in the last week, particularly as we're heading into spring and people are coming back out again, and may have been in for some of the events in the city last week and stayed, dropped by to do some work as well. But we do have one event that is coming up this week on the 30th, which is tomorrow, at 9:30am, transforming waste into profit. I know you'll love this one councillor Marks. This is being presented by our business partner, Aspire, again, somebody you know very well, about the circular economy solutions for Brisbane businesses. So this is how commercial waste management for businesses can become opportunities to explore what resources are available for you to reduce your waste, save on costs and maybe even make money out of your waste disposal as well. So that is at 9:30 tomorrow morning. And I suggest even if you let your businesses know and keep an eye out for another one, the work that Aspire do in the circular economy is absolutely outstanding. So it's wonderful to have them at the hub as well. Last week, we had the presentation on the Asia-Pacific City Summit. That comes up again in October this year. It is, I'm going to say the 16th, but I'm thinking I felt like I said the 16th for the Fashion Festival, but it is the 16th iteration of APCS as well. And please let your businesses know in your local areas that early bird finish this Friday for registrations. But I'd just like councillors to know that registration is free for you if you go on to register. We'd love to see as many councillors as possible there. APCS has an absolutely proven track record of delivering innovation, connecting cities and creating commercial outcomes. The 2019 APCS, which is actually the last iteration of the full in-person APCS, we had a hybrid one in 2021, actually won the conference of the year award in Australia for their clear vision and their purpose. So it is an outstanding conference. This year, the theme is shaping cities for our future. It's going to address the cities of connection, focusing on technology, data and the people. Cities of sustainability, adapting to growth, inclusivity and wellbeing. And cities, cities, cities of legacy, sorry, creating events of longevity and prosperity. So over three days, from the 11th to the 13th of October, there's site visits, there's networking, there's keynote speakers, there's plenary sessions, there's heaps there. We've already announced Beau Seo as one of the keynotes, a two-time world champion debater. Andrew Liveris AO, obviously the organising committee president. And Charles Montgomery, who is the award-winning author of Happy City, is joining us from Vancouver. So a great range of delegates, there's the Mayor's Forum and the City Leaders Forum, as well as companies, businesses, CEOs, directors, managers. And of course, in concurancy with that, we have the Young Professionals Forum for students and those under 30 that want to come and network and have a look at some of the city's challenges that they could work for us as well. We've also got the major project announcement briefings, which we started in 2019, has been a great success for businesses and for briefings for projects right across the Asia-Pacific countries as well. So please, share with your businesses and your, and your workplace colleagues or people that you know under 30 that might like to be involved. There are some places available and councillors, you can register free, we'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Further speakers on the report? See no one standing. We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee, please.
I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of August 2023, be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of August 2023, be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week's Transport Committee presentation was a general construction update on the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge. We know the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge will span 80 metres long over the entrance of Breakfast Creek and will provide an enhanced active transport link along the river from the inner city to the northern suburbs. Councillors may remember that I mentioned in the chamber earlier this year that the bridge has reached its 50% construction milestone and we've continued to see significant progress on the project. All concreting work for the bridge's landing structure in Newstead Park were completed in May of this year and the bridge approach structure being completed, was completed in August, so just completed. All marine piling works are now completed. I'm happy to say residents can now walk underneath part of the bridge in Newstead Park and will soon to, soon be able to enjoy the new landscaping. Newstead Park landing area works, including concreting and landscaping, are underway with work starting near the creek and progressing up towards Breakfast Creek Road. Roadworks on Breakfast Creek Road are ongoing, including centre medium and road pavement works, curb works and signalling. As well as this, sections of the permanent two-way on-road bike path on Newstead Avenue was also completed in February this year, as well as cycle path on Newstead Terrace. Heading north to, well, heading north to the other side of the creek at Cameron Rocks, reserve residents will start to see the extension to the ever-popular Laura's Bonnie Riverwalk start to take shape. When council delivered the Riverwalk alongside the Kingston Smith Drive upgrade, what we saw from the community was feedback around a desire to link in with the existing Riverwalk network and the inner-city active transport network. Around 150 metres of this extension has been completed thus far, which has required over 1,500 tonnes of concrete. 100 metres of this has already been balustraded, which will be completed along the entire length by September this year before the grand arch of the bridge arrives. Fabrication for the arch is being undertaken by local SEQ contractor, Sun Engineering, and makes up about 40% of the overall works required to deliver the project. Works began at the start of 2023, with the first bridge components being delivered to the Port of Brisbane for assembly in late June 2023. I'm happy to say, Chair, that we received some of the first arch sections of the bridge for assembly just last week down at the Port of Brisbane and assembly will be anticipated to be completed this year on-site by October 2023. We're of course preparing to lift the, then the single arch bridge span by late this year, where we transported, transported, as I said, down the Brisbane River from the Port of Brisbane to the site and lifted in one fell swoop. Once completed, Chair, it will be more than a bridge, it will be an important link to the Breakfast Creek Sports Precinct and an important link to the Athletes Village at Hamilton. But most importantly, it will provide a safe and active connection for the many residents who are flocking to this growing part of Brisbane. Now, before I finish, Mr. Chair, I'd also like to just share a milestone that's been reached but further down the river at the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. The past week has seen a flurry of construction with multiple concrete pours, deck, deck pours and module installations being done. The first concrete is now going into the viewing platform on the bridge's main pier, Pier Four, with pours commencing yesterday. Pier Five on the Kangaroo Point side of the river is receiving its final touches on its support arms, with pouring also commencing yesterday. Just as pieces of a jigsaw puzzle come together to gradually form a picture, the bridge's deck modules are also beginning to come together, which will reveal to the public for the first time the structure of the eventual built form of the bridge. Span Four's final deck module will be installed this week. Span Three's first module was installed last week and Span Two's concrete deck installation will be completed this week. So jargon aside, that means essentially, Chair, by October, the bridge will be connected from the CBD all the way out to the main mass point, the, the centre of the bridge. It's all happening, Mr. Chair, and this council is focused on creative, creating infrastructure that enhances the livability of our city and delivers more active transport links to help us move more residents more efficiently and sustainably. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Further speakers on the report? See no one standing. We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee, please.
I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of August 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of August 2023, be adopted. Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My committee last week heard a report about contributed assets, how they're received, how the negotiations with the third-party entities operate as they are transferred from the third party to us. In a very fast summary, a contributed asset is an asset created by a party that is not council and then ownership of that asset is transferred to us for ownership and ongoing maintenance. Because of those two things, our interest in them is very high because we want to be able to be sure that the, the item that is being transferred to us is of a standard that we would accept and that council does not incur costs or labours as a result of bringing that item up to an acceptable standard. The other thing is we also are often involved in its planning work so that we understand the maintenance requirement of that asset, so that when it is transferred to us, we understand the expectation of maintenance and that is brought in to our, brought into our maintenance programmes and schedules. So for a contributed asset to be accepted by council, certain principles must be met, including clear ownership of that asset from all parties and understanding of what is required to maintain that asset and, and understand that council does in fact have the ability to do that maintenance, that the completed asset must meet our quality standards and council's plans for replacements were required and has sufficient information to register each asset. Once contributed assets are completed, compliance during and after handover is achieved, achieved through joint inspection with the asset owner and the delivery partner. Defect, so the asset owner is a term we use internally in the organisation, which part of council, so whether it be, if it's roads, it's a certain individual, if it's parks, it's a different individual. So that's what I mean by asset owner. The delivery partner is the third party that delivers to us. Defect identification, agreed remediation of that if there is requirement for remediation on that defect. Finalisation of the separation of the boundaries, that is, clear denunciation of what is ours and what is theirs, and undertaking post-defect inspections and then creating an asset registration and documentation. Some of the big projects that we've dealt with tend to come from a number of groups. Our big, the big people, the big organisations, I should say, who contribute to us typically, Queensland Government, the Queensland Government entities like the Economic Development, Queensland Pro Development Areas, the Department of Transport and Main Roads, Queensland Rail and SEQ Water are the main ones that, that hand over contributed assets. So within the last 12 months, council has been involved with approximately 50 interactions as we prepare to receive assets from those asset deliverers. And they range in scale from small intersections to multi-billion dollar projects. So projects where we're interacting with them to understand what our obligations would be when we become the asset owner include Crossroads Rail, Queens Wharf, North Shore Hamilton, Oxley, the eastern and northern transitways, the Beams Road open level crossing, a number of park and rides and station, station accessibility upgrades to name but a few. I thought it was an important opportunity for the councillors to consider some of these ordinary operational matters, which has been a feature of this session. And we'll be moving to project work in the next session, but I thought it's important that we take a moment to consider what are contributed assets, how do we accept them and what is the oversight that goes with receiving these items.
Thank you councillor Wines. Further speakers on the Infrastructure Committee report? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on item A, contributed assets from state-led projects. This is an area where I think council is, is not getting it right. There are a number of examples that I'm going to refer to today, but in my experience, council has failed to number one, be involved at an early stage to ensure good planning and development outcomes, including making sure the right mix of new facilities goes into these areas. And as we've heard from councillor Wines, councils involved in this at an early stage, that they give feedback, that they make sure the assets and structures are all okay. That's not been the experience I've had in my ward and the Tennis Centre is one of the primary examples of a massive failure of that process. Yeah, car parking, but no. I'm just literally talking about footpaths, street gardens and street maintenance. After it came off the developers' 12-month hold, council just didn't have it on its assets. The asset officers told me there was no money to maintain the gardens. And this is a huge inherited section of, so it was a mess. It took, it took at least a year, at least a year, and then ongoing complaints to try and get things done. We are still doing that 10 years later. Council saying, that's not ours, that's the state, that's not ours, that's the state. That's what happens every single day in my ward. What councillor Wines says is going on at council is not what is being reflected in reality on the ground in Tennyson Ward. I can then point to other examples. There are two PDAs happening in Tennyson Ward. One is the Oxley PDA, which is technically now on the Jamboree side of the line, but as that was going through, it was in Tennyson Ward. And I pushed very, very hard to have parkland created and a lot of that open space be returned to Brisbane City Council. So Brisbane City Council, instead of perhaps looking at a really good water-sensitive design that would allow for water to be harvested and reused to maintain the open space, they've just allowed the state government to build a swamp, a giant swamp. There are no upgrades to the stormwater assets beyond putting in the new stormwater pipes for the new residential areas. So the bottom of Clivedon Avenue floods, it floods in heavy rain. And instead of getting upgrades to support the surrounding residential area that gets flooded, council's done nothing. Council didn't push back there, to my knowledge. Council has said, sure, we'll just take that bit. And we're losing open space that should be sporting fields, we should have water tank collection, filtration and reuse, and we should have an innovative solution here that does not make the stormwater system worse for Corinda and Oxley residents who live in Black Heath Road, Clivedon Avenue. I also pushed really, really hard for council and the state to look at a water reticulation system. If we're coming into a brownfields development like this, where we can look at best practice to make sure that we are using these natural resources in the most effective way, water harvesting and reuse should be part of that. That wasn't discussed. And instead, as I said, there's a big bio-retention basin that takes up a huge amount of area, which will be a swamp in this part of the back of Corinda and Oxley. And there is no upgrades to infrastructure, none. And there's a whole community of hundreds of residents going in there, and yeah, they're getting a stormwater pipe that feeds down to the open channel. It's an open channel that I've got to call in every six months and get council to clean out so the water can run through it. That's what this council does. Or we can go to your wrong pilly. The other PDA happening in my area. Now, I know, because again, I made submissions as part of that process and I pushed hard to make sure that the small amount of parkland we are getting... to make sure that the small amount of parkland we are getting there will be useful parkland for the residents, six stories, community centre, aged care, public housing, and there's a small section of park that's going in there. And I, I said to the state people, I said, well, righto, so what, what community facilities are you going to put in the park? Picnic shelter, taps, bins, a pathway? No, council didn't want anything. Council did not want anything. So, council had the opportunity to make sure we got facilities in a small pocket park going in, in the Yorongpili PDA area, and I think we're actually in the end going to inherit probably a bioretention area that's not going to have any practical use for residents as green space. Not only that, not only that, the other big issue is immediately adjoining this site to the north, there is a footpath that has a staircase in it. The stairs go down under a rail bridge. Now, I said to the state and to, you know, part of this process, it is critical that the project make sure that those stairs are removed, and one of the connections that we can get that would improve pedestrian and cycling infrastructure for people in my area was to get rid of a staircase in the middle of a footpath. Now, the state's not doing that, I doubt council could be bothered to do anything whatsoever. What councillor Wines has said here today is so far removed from reality. This council, and you can look at Cross River Rail, I could do this all day, Cross River Rail. This administration refused, they voted against putting in a pedestrian crossing on Mouldmay Street at Fairfield. I've pushed for it as part of the Cross River Rail project. Do you know who's doing it? Cross River Rail is putting it in for me, not the council I represent. This is a pedestrian crossing, a zebra crossing on a council street, and Cross River Rail's going to put it in because I've been pushing for it. Not council, not anyone in there, they said they didn't want it, and because I've pestered the Cross River Rail people, they've gone back to council and it's happening. This is what this administration is like. They are not doing the work that we need as a community to ensure that when major state government projects happen, the infrastructure that connects to it is actually upgraded in a way that meets the intensified level of development that is happening in that part of the world. That's a huge problem, and this council's just failing to do the work. The second problem is that there is a very, very tenuous connection to actually maintaining these assets, and half the time, council don't even know that it's now a council asset, and it's not getting maintained. And I just say this to councillor Marks and councillor Wines, just go and clean up the centre of the road verge out there at the Tennyson Centre, it's council land, stop saying it's a state government land, it looks terrible, it is the premier tennis centre for the state, and council keeps saying it's, it's a state. The state say, no, that's definitely council, it's definitely council. So, I think what councillor Wines has said might be how it's supposed to work in practice, but in reality, every day I see the poor planning and the, the poor design, and the failure to be innovative, and the failure to properly maintain these assets when they come back online, and it is having a lasting impact on the communities that live around these major assets. It is a major shortcoming of council, that council's not doing the work needed to make sure these big projects are handed over to us in a way that enhances community livability, enhances functionality, improves the outcome of community facilities and resources, because if you're plonking more people down in these areas, then there is a responsibility to make sure the surrounding footpaths, roads, vegetation is of a decent standard, and that is not
Further speakers. See no one rising. councillor Wines, write a reply. No, we'll put the, we will put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. councillor Allen, city planning, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-second of August, twenty twenty-three, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Atwood that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-second of August, twenty twenty-three, be adopted. councillor Allen, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item A was a committee presentation on a development application at one hundred and ten Melton Road, Nunda. Situated in the vibrant suburb of Nunda, one hundred and ten Melton Road is a well-planned development that encompasses a range of meticulously-designed residential units, communal spaces and environmentally-conscious amenities. Conveniently located within walking distance to the Nunda Village and close to high-frequency public transport options, one hundred and ten Melton Road also provides access to employment hubs, entertainment venues and essential community facilities. The development is a five-story residential development with two basement levels and has a diverse mix of units, including two one-bedroom units, thirty-two two-bedroom units and one bedroom, a one-three bedroom unit, certainly the type of product that we are hoping to see at that affordable end of the housing spectrum. The development boasts spacious private balconies ranging from ten square metres to sixteen square metres, providing residents with their own light-filled spaces. One of the hallmarks of one hundred and ten Melton Road is the approach to subtropical design elements that are evident in the two-point-seven metre high ceilings, practical incorporated weather protections and sun shading mechanisms that enhance the appeal of openings. The approved development offers sixty-eight resident car parks and thirty-five dedicated bike spaces. An additional nine visitor car parks and complimentary bike spaces extend a warm welcome to guests. The development's emphasis on accessible, accessibility aligns with council's strategy of promoting sustainable urban living. There is a hundred and eight square metres of communal open space, and that's been dedicated to just project a, an ability for the community to engage, and also a hundred and sixty-two square metres of deep planting. I'd also note that the, the development is about a hundred and, about a hundred-odd metres from Oxonham Park, which provides approximately five hectares of sport and recreation space. Further adding to the sustainable urban, urban living is the presence of deep planting along the western boundary, which contributes to an urban cooling effect whilst adding aesthetic value. One hundred and ten Melton Road was approved as it supports Brisbane's sustainable growth strategy by providing the right mix of housing that is delivered with function, sustainability and location in mind, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Further speakers. councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, I rise to speak on item A, the development at one hundred and ten Melton Road, Nunda. I want to start by saying that I've been on the planning committee for three weeks now, and I was actually quite shocked when this DA came through last week. This is a code-accessible DA, code-accessible. And with all the planning issues that are going on in the city of Brisbane at the moment, bringing up a code-accessible DA that had been decided by officers a week earlier, so we weren't even making a decision, is honestly lazy. I don't, I don't think there's any other way other than to describe that as lazy. Either that, or it is designed to try and just be as bland as you can be in this council. We've got so many important issues that we should be considering. Today, we had a briefing on the South East Queensland Regional Plan, you know, that's a good one. We're not talking about the LGP or the LTIP, we're not talking about city plan, we're not talking about any policy issues from Brisbane precinct plans, you know, it was fascinating today, next week will be a good one, I'll enjoy talking about that. But my point here is, this is a code-accessible DA. However, I think councillor Allen has kicked an own goal here, because I was listening to the DA, and this is a five-story area, and this is a DA presentation, sorry, this is a five-story area, this is a five-story development. You would think that it'd be pretty straightforward, right? As the development's gone, I went for about twenty-nine minutes, the presentation on a code-accessible DA. As this went on, it was very clear there are a few things that the officer was not saying in the presentation, and I, I feel like councillor Allen is going to end up a bit like the former councillor for Walter Taylor, Julian Simmons, in that he's going to bring in such bad development in his area, his residents are going to revolt, they will revolt, that is what happened, that is what happened to councillor Julian Simmons, and the current councillor is still feeling the impact of that. But councillor Allen has set a benchmark today that is quite surprising for his local area. So, this is, this is what this development has approved, a forty-centimetre front setback. Suburban area, five stories, it's a forty-centimetre front setback. There is, it's shocking to me, I think it's four metres is the five-story front setback, but council has required verge widening, so they've taken three-point-nine metres of the frontage, which, fine, that's what they're doing, but then they've not established a front setback to the building. The building is essentially going to be hard up to the boundary of the footpath and the road if and when Melton Road is widened. Now, this is bad planning. It contributes to a gross overdevelopment of the site. When you reduce the amount of land and you allow a big building to be put on it, the GFA and the site cover are increased, and that has an adverse impact. That sets a precedent. Now, this is a precedent that's been set in the ward of Northgate that I don't think many people in Northgate will be proud of. I think they want proper setbacks, I think they want to know that development in their area is going to preserve their amenity and the community's amenity going forward. So, I think that without question, and I know that I often get contacted by people who, you know, are in many areas around Brisbane, but I understand there are, there is an independent running in Northgate, I think there's Green running in Northgate, there's a Labor Opposition running in Northgate, and if councillor Allen wants to contribute to poor planning in his own ward and put it on the public record, I think that's something that the candidates running against him in Northgate are going to be really interested in.
councillor Johnson, councillor Johnson, can I draw you back to the report, please? Who's running in what ward at the moment is not in the report? No, I'm not touchy, councillor Griffiths, I'm running by the rules, thank you.
Well, okay, you just, I'm just going to do this whenever anybody mentions somebody else.
No, 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 hang on, hang on, councillor Johnson, I haven't given you the call back yet, you can wait. You've got the call, councillor Johnson.
That's a good ruling, I look forward to raising, raising that when others talk about, mention any kind of politician not in the report. So, I, I think that there are a lot of people who'll be really interested in this decision. There are a number of other issues, I think, that are problematic. As I said, it's five stories, that's fine, but councillor Allen wasn't here when city plan went through in two thousand and fourteen, but I was, I was, and I remember the arguments made at the time by people like councillor Adams, the former planning chair, Amanda Cooper, the Lord Mayor of the time, they said, no, no, the setbacks will protect communities, we're taking out GFA as a measure of ensuring that there is not overwhelming bulk scale, the setbacks will prevent that from happening. And guess what this administration has done for the past decade? Shop setbacks back. The only measure left to try and control overdevelopment on sites, and they have cut it, and they've cut it so that there is a forty-centimetre front setback. And you know, you would think, I think it is two metres, you're supposed to have two metres of landscaping, from memory, on the front setback? Do you know what is going in the front setback in the forty centimetres? Containerised plants, pot plants, pot plants! So, here we are in an area that is undergoing significant change, that is undergoing densification, and fair enough, if that's something councillor Allen supports, that's good, but putting pot plants in a forty-centimetre front setback in a five-story building, that is not good planning, that is not good public policy, that is actually contrary to what city plan says is a basic level of amenity for good design in this city. This is in councillor Allen's own area. I don't think that is right, it is not right. You would think the planning chairperson would stand up and say, hey, we need to preserve the amenity of these residents, yes, they're going to be in high-rise, we need to make sure there's a proper setback, that the minimum setback is met, we need to make sure that minimum landscaping, minimum landscaping requirements are met to protect their amenity to ensure a good subtropical design to the street, that would be good, but it gets better. As it went on, as it went on, you could hear, you heard more about the open space. It's a patio, there's a patio, is there a barbecue, is there a pool, is there anything like that, is there picnic tables and chairs? No, there's nothing. So, again, if you look at city plan, where you're talking about densification like this, we should be seeing some community facilities going in that will benefit the residents. We also then, we also then, and this is, this is the craziest bit in my view, right? So, we were told that the front setback of three-point-nine metres was being taken to preserve future road widening. Guess where council's putting the footpath that has to be built? They're putting it out on the original street alignment to connect with the existing buildings on either side, so that if council has to come and widen the road, they've got to destroy the footpath that goes in and rebuild the footpath. Council's not even putting the footpath in to start the new location of the footpath. Now, okay, that's a little deviation, but that means this developer is going to waste, I don't know, a hundred grand, a hundred and twenty grand on building a footpath that council's just going to demolish. This is not good planning. I don't think nine square, oh, sorry, nine-metre balconies, three-by-three-metre balconies are good, they're tiny, some of the balconies on this place, I don't think you'll get tables and chairs on, I presume that you've still got to have all the air conditioning infrastructure out on the balconies, they'll be tiny. So, if councillor Allen thinks that bringing presentations like this, that actually show erosion of good planning standards under city plan two thousand and fourteen, in his own ward is a good idea, he's got another thing coming. I'm enjoying being on this committee, thank you for electing me to it.
councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for a period of fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Me, we, sorry.
Seconded.
Thank you. We have an adjournment for afternoon tea proposed by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Mackay for a period of fifteen minutes. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. See you soon, councillors. Any further speakers? Anyone standing? No, councillor Allen, write a reply.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Look, part of the reason that this application was brought through to council was that one of the areas where we aren't seeing a lot of activity across the city is in the medium-density residential zoning, where, you know, for one reason or another, the feasibilities just aren't stacking up, and realistically, we, we need some of this housing out in our suburbs, you know, it's an opportunity to provide well-located, affordable housing for our suburban communities. Now, in the context of this particular application, there is a, a road widening dedication there where that development doesn't prejudice a three-point-nine-metre future road widening along Melton Road. The, the streetscape will be, you know, it'll include street trees, it'll include a, a footpath and turfing, so the appearance from the street will, will be attractive. This particular point that councillor Johnston was raising, that's the, the most, the narrowest point, the rest of the building is set back quite a lot further than what she was proposing, and I think, you know, disappointingly- And I think, you know, disappointingly, it is an example of councillor Johnston not supporting housing in our suburbs. It's really well-located. You know, it is something that is going to be, you know, certainly something the market is demanding out there. And to, to take a negative view on this, I think, i- is not appropriate when we are facing a housing crisis, you know? Certainly, this type of product is aimed squarely at the, the affordable end of the market, and we think that's a good thing. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Alan. We will now put the report of City Planning. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division, seconded.
Division called by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton. Ayes to my right and nos to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it. The vote are being 23 in favour and one abstention.
The report has passed. Councillors, please return to your seats. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday 22nd August 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of August 2023 be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week's committee presentation was on council's Green Heart event programme. Now in its 15th year, the Green Heart Fair remains one of Brisbane's favourite community events. Since 2009, residents have flocked in ever-growing numbers to learn about sustainability and what they can do to live in an eco-friendly lifestyle. Since moving to Victoria Park, the two fairs have been our biggest yet, with over 35,000 residents enjoying this signature sustainability-themed event. In the presentation, we heard some of the highlights from this year's fair, which was held in May. There was plenty to do on the day, with 116 sustainable exhibitors, displays and workshops, featuring 12 sustainability expert talks throughout the day. We had really positive feedback on the live music, eco-friendly crafts and food trucks, and more than 3,000 free native plants were given away throughout the day. The committee heard some fantastic sustainability outcomes, including that with more than 18,000 people in attendance, the entire fair managed to fill only four wheelie bins full of general landfill waste, which is an amazing outcome. All surfware was compostable, and our waste, our waste sorting station helped to divert 960 litres of organic waste from landfill. 118 containers were collected through Containers for Change, and the proceeds of that donated to a local sustainability social enterprise. Overall, we received really great feedback on the event. More than half of the attendees were new to the event, and 98% of those surveyed told us that they had a great time. The move to Victoria Park has allowed us to put on bigger and better Green Heart fairs. But since 2022, we've been bringing the Green Heart Fair programme back to the suburbs through pop-up stalls in, in local shopping centres across the city and, of course, our community planting days. Our pop-up stalls are head for, held for one to two days at suburban shopping centres throughout the city, where residents can collect a free native plant or a Green Heart Ranger bag for the kids. Of course, everyone will be familiar with our community street tree planting days, which we hold across the city and are always a fantastic time. Mr. Chair, we also had a number of SEF expenditure submissions, a dollar refurbishment at Batong Park, The Gap, playground upgrade at Merewa Park, Sunnybank Hills, playground upgrade at Fallon Park at Evadon Park, pathways landscaping and seating at Lake Parklands in Forest Lake, and fitness equipment at Trundle Park, Cooperoo. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. I rise to, to also speak on this committee report, the, our Green Heart fairs. Can I say I was interested to hear councillor Davis talk about the fact that only four wheelie bins of rubbish came out of the, the event held at Victoria Park? And I think that's a really good outcome for the residents of Brisbane, and certainly what we've been talking about in relation to FOGO. Can I just say, in relation to my ward, we've had great difficulty getting any bins from council for any of the community events that we're doing. So it's been very, very difficult to get community bins for community events, because apparently council has no bins. Council has no bins.
Point of order. Councillors, please. Councillors. Point of order, councillor Marks.
Councillor Griffiths is misleading the chamber. The request was put in at 2:30 before the event on a Sunday, on a Friday afternoon.
Thank you, thank you. Councillors, councillors. Councillor Strunk, you're getting quite vocal. He's been quiet all meeting. He has not. He was rather rowdy at the beginning. Councillor Griffiths, you've got the call.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. What I would say, and no, I think that's not correct, but, to the councillor, I think that's not correct. We have applied for bins, and we've been told previously, council has no bins. Council has no bins. I don't, how many other councillors have had that same response? Oh, is it just this side of the chamber? Just the opposition side of the chamber. Wow, okay, that.
Councillor Marks, we, we do not yell out across the chamber. Councillor Marks. Councillor Collier. Not yet, councillor Griffiths.
Well, I'm just going back.
No, you can stand there until I'm satisfied that the chamber's quiet. You've got the call, councillor Griffiths.
Thank you. Anyway, touched a sensitive nerve there, but I would ask, I would ask if the administration do provide bins to all councillors for all events, and that you do it in a fair way. Now, but getting back to the Green Heart City Fair, that city fair costs us $325,000. Now, our, our little, Brisbane Sustainability Agency that we own, but apparently we own, but we don't get information from them. So I asked for, they did a report, they did a survey of the people attending that fair, and I would have been interested. There were thousands of people there. But apparently, we did a survey on them, but no one can tell me. So here's this survey going into the details, but then I asked how many people were surveyed. We can't tell you that, councillor. We don't know. They haven't told us, they won't tell us. So, but people apparently from all over Brisbane came, but we don't know if this is five people surveyed, or 1,500 people surveyed, or 35,000 people surveyed. We just don't know that information. And this, I suppose, is getting to the point that really worries me at this administration, is we've set up a company, Brisbane Sustainability, and they're running the shop. They're doing the whole lot, and some things they do really well, and some things they do shockingly. But we don't have a say in it. We don't have a say in it. And in fact, you ask, you ask for feedback on it, and it has to be filtered. It can't be given to you. Has to be filtered, can't be given to us. This is very concerning for me. This is very, very concerning for me. But more so what's concerning is now we've moved to a system of green up, the green pop-up fairs in local shopping centres. What do I hear? They're all in LMP wards. Brookside, Indrapilly, Queen Street Mall and Greensapes, they're great. We heard it from that side of the chamber, they're great. It's a bit like the bins. It's great to get bins at our events. Not for this side of the chamber, but for that side. It's great. This is really disturbing. And it's more disturbing because we should be looking after, and it should be how we're governing, we should be looking after everyone in Brisbane. And I know at my event on the weekend, we had the Maruka Family Fund Day, we had thousands of people there. We didn't have to have one of these pop-up events set up in a shopping centre for two days to give out a couple of plants. We could have actually had a council, we could have had a council tent there with these people in it for four hours, giving out thousands of plants. We could have had that. And I think that's what should be happening, and it used to happen. It used to happen in 2009, under Campbell Newman, it used to happen. And it went well. People loved them. People in the suburbs got plants. People benefited from it. It was actually committed to everyone, not just people in, well, wherever. Not just people in LMP wards. And I really think there's so many opportunities out there. We already fund festivals, not well, but we fund them. We have our libraries go there. We had our graffiti unit there. We had our sustainability people there, but we couldn't do this there. And I just think that's a missed opportunity for council. It's a missed opportunity for spending $325,000 on this event, when we can't get any data from it. $325,000 for this event.
Councillor Johnson, questions are for question time.
Unbelievable. So I'd like to see this event changed, but where's the feedback loop? You ask questions in committee, and it's like, well, no. We, we can't give you that information because they're a company owned by us and they don't share any information with us. Are you stupid? Do you really want information? One of the other councillors even goes, well, you should just come along to the event. You should just come along to the event. Then you'll find it out. As someone who's passionately interested in the environment and loves it and enjoys working the community on it, I just think they're the wrong answers. And if you actually put your defensive guard down, you could actually get some really good results by listening to us and listening to, more broadly, the community, and you'd come up with some good ideas so that council was working for everyone, not just for this political group. Because it should be something we're achieving for our whole community, our whole city, and not just one particular group. People want to be educated, they want to, they want to be involved, they are passionate. Young people are passionate about the environment, older people are passionate about the environment. They love it. And it's such an easy thing to do. It's something we, I think, can do well. I don't think we're doing particularly well, and I don't think, at the moment, we have a, a very dynamic team who's leading this particular operation. I think it's falling really, it's missing the mark. And you're not at any point meant to question or ask any information about this sort of thing, the Green Heart Fair. You're meant to sit there and be told how great it is. And if you don't agree with how great it is, or if you have any questions, God help you, because we're not going to give you an answer. Anyway, I hope the administration reconsiders the Green Heart fairs. They can be so much better than what they are. And I'd like to think that Tracy Price as mayor would, well, she was passionate. She was passionate about, about what could be done for the environment and what could be done for our city. And like, it was great to see her go round and meet every, every group that was there and have a discussion about them, and actually be involved in the community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Griffiths. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Whitby.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to enter the debate on the Environment, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report. Through you, Chair, I congratulate the councillor for being able to receive four event bins to her event on the weekend. I'm looking at an email at the moment dated 22nd of August for an event on the 10th of September, which is just shy of three weeks, notice saying, sorry, cannot provide your bins on those dates. So I can congratulate her on that.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Just one moment, please. Point of order, councillor Davis.
An event in three weeks' time is not in the committee report. It's about the Green Heart Fair, and I asked the councillor to speak about that.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you, councillor Davis. Councillor Whitby, can you go back to the report, please?
I'm going back, I'm speaking directly on the report that the councillor gave, where she spoke about the community bins. She was able to fit, fill four bins that are in this report, and that's what I'm speaking on.
Councillor, councillor Whitby, they were the bins for that event.
Yes. And I'm just saying, congratulations on being able to secure them. Because I've got an event that's three weeks out, and I was denied them. So my question is, you know, question, you know, obviously not a question to the, to the chair.
Questions are for question time, councillor Whitby.
A rhetorical question would be, why are we not resourced enough to actually supply the city?
Just, just one moment, councillor Whitby. Councillors, can I acknowledge these young gentlemen up in the chamber? Before they leave, they're heading off to Taipan to represent Brisbane in basketball, so come round at all. Thank you very much for coming in and seeing us today, lads. Councillor Whitby, you've got the call.
Thank you. All I was rising to speak on was the four bins that were secured for this event, and just to congratulate the councillor on being able to secure those bins and whether she can provide any tips and tricks on actually how to do it, because we obviously can't.
I think that's an acknowledgement of some kind of failure, anyway. Councillor Davis, oh, sorry, any further speakers? No, councillor Davis, write a reply.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And that was an amazing contribution by, by councillor Griffiths. Let me just show you the paperwork that I provided councillor Griffiths this morning, which was exactly what he had asked for. What I cannot provide councillor Griffiths is identifiable information about people who filled in a survey. It's a survey that was open to, it was a survey that was open to attendees of the last Green Heart Fair. It was one that was organised and run by the Brisbane Sustainability Agency, and all information as part of that was not to be shared with anyone but the Brisbane Sustainability Agency. However, Brisbane Sustainability Agency extrapolated from that information a little bit of information here. Let me just tell you what's in here, Mr. Chair. It talks about 18,000 estimated attendees, 3,000 native plants, 116 sustainable exhibitors, displays and workshops. There was 98% attendee satisfaction, 12 sustainable living expert talks, 960 litres of organic waste diverted from landfill, four general waste bins to landfill, 1,180 containers collected with funds donated to substation 33. Well, we'll keep going, because there's more, there's more. We had 100% compostable surfware, it was a solar-powered stage, there were hydration stations, 91 mugs were used at our mug library, waste stations for organic compostable and recyclable waste and landfill. 48% of attendees were returning fair friends, 52% were new, and many shared their favourite fair moments on social media. I won't go through that because a page devoted to it. The favourites at the fair were free native plants, sustainable workshops, live entertainment and engaging activities for adults and kids. The favourite zones were the Brisbane City Council Green Home Living, Eco Kids, Reduce, Reuse, Recycle, Sustainable Shopping. Favorite things about council zones were the free plants and native plant advice, the friendly staff and great information provided. The staff was so friendly, approachable, knowledgeable and engage, and engaging. Thank you, BCC. There's a whole heap more information in this, and including a demographic snapshot of the post-event survey respondents. And it also has a map of those that came or filled in the survey as to where they lived. I'm actually not sure what more information that the councillor is after. What I can provide the councillor though, because he asked additional questions this week that he did not ask last week, were how many questions were asked? Well, councillor, there were just over 20. And how many people responded to the survey? Haven't got it right in front, but around 200. Now, that's all he asked for. I have provided it. In our committee, Mr. Chair, I always provide a response to councillors. I have never not done that for councillor Griffiths. I don't intend to do that in the future. But it is most irritating when he comes in here filibustering and carrying on about something that he asked for, that he got, and now is complaining about.
Thank you, councillor Davis. We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Marks, City Standards please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of August, 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Adaman that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of August, 2023 be adopted. Councillor Marks, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before I get to last week's committee presentation, I just want to address the conversational, a few, that's what we want to call it, that was just held here in the chamber about bins. Council officers have, or council officer within the waste space, they have, uh, on hand 75 bins red, 75 bins yellow. Um, up until now, once that allocation is exhausted, there are no more bins to go out to community groups. The Lord Mayor, we don't own, we don't have a stock warehouse full of rubbish bins lying around. And I know that they seem to think that we do. So can I finish, please?
Just one moment councillor Marks. Councillor Johnson, councillor Griffiths. Come on. That cheeky smile won't get you off the hook mate. We're going to listen to councillor Marks in quiet. Councillor Marks.
So as I was saying, council does not have a warehouse full of empty bins sitting around doing nothing. The other thing that needs to be taken into account is we actually transport those bins to the location upon the councillor's request. So the other thing that we do ask for is a timely manner to organise the bins being requested. So 2.30 on a Friday afternoon is nowhere near enough time for an event being held on Sunday. I'm quite happy to take on notice councillor, uh, Whitme's comments through you, Mr Chair, to find out about that particular situation. Um, what we have, what the Lord Mayor has asked the waste team is to source more bins and we will be doubling the bin location, allocations from 75 to 150. However, I must impress upon all the councillors, you need to give us plenty of notice. Can I tell you, as a local councillor, I don't organise a movie night on one week and then plan to have it the following week. None of us do that in this place. We're all adults, we know how to organise events. We all know that there's plenty of notice needed for a variety of things, bins being one of them. So can I just please ask you, if you're having an event, make sure you give the waste people plenty of notice. It's not just the bins, it's the truck driver and the truck that we have to hire and organise, take him off whatever job he may be doing, to deliver those bins to you. Then he has to get to, or she, to the location that you had the event on, either when it's finished or the next day, remove all those bins and then empty them. So it's not just a matter of going somewhere, picking up bins and shoving them wherever you want them to. There is a process involved and all you need to do is send an email to the Waste Wars, uh, wasteemail.com, which I think you all know. And as far as the comment about saying that it's just one side of the chamber, I think that's very offensive to the councillor office, who, officer who, um, works extremely hard in that role and she does everything she can to make sure all the councillor's needs are met. So I apologise to her on behalf of, of all that's been said and insinuated. Last week's presentation was on the new farm lighting upgrade in Cutters Landing, which I have to admit I've never heard of before, but apparently it's a new farm. Um, and councillor Howard obviously is across this presentation, um, and this project. So I'm happy to leave any debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marks. Further speakers? See no one rising. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of August, 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of August, 2023 be adopted. Councillor Howard, you've got the call.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chair. Um, and prior to moving to the report, uh, just want to let everybody know the wonderful things that have been happening across Brisbane this week. So one of the, uh, one of the events that we were very pleased to host was the Lord Mayor's photographic award winners. And it was fantastic to see everyone who had, um, become a winner. We've got lots of different awards. Um, we had put those, um, photographs up in some of our libraries. It's a, it's a, it's a great opportunity for, um, local people to get involved with, uh, with what's happening around Brisbane and to take some fantastic photos. So I want to say a huge thank you to everyone who entered. Um, and, and a big, uh, congratulations to all of our award winners. We also held, um, our very first Porty in the Park, which was P-A-W-T-Y in our dog park. And councillor Dixon, uh, was, was there and it was, um, a great event, um, supported by local businesses. And it was really something that was extra special, uh, down in the, in the Newstead area. Um, the QUT dragon boat regatta, regatta took over, um, for a second year of the New Farm Park. And again, I think people who were, um, going for their picnics in New Farm Park were quite surprised to see dragon boats. I, I know that through you, Mr Chair, I know that councillor Owen and councillor Strunk are very seasoned dragon boat, uh, people. Uh, but I have to say, uh, seeing them in the Brisbane River in the New Farm Park reach, uh, is, is very new. But the, uh, the QUT team have done an amazing job of encouraging particularly international students to, uh, participate in the dragon boat race. And, uh, it really was a, a great regatta and we're looking forward to hosting them well into the future. Uh, finally, I just want to talk about Brisbane Sings 2023. And, uh, this is the 10th year now that Brisbane Sings has, uh, performed with, um, 600 members of community choirs, um, across Brisbane. And it was a fantastic, um, event at QPAC on Sunday evening with, uh, family and friends. And, uh, everybody has just such a wonderful time. I've been proud to support, um, to, to support the, um, the Queensland Show Choir, who bring all of these community choirs together. And Brisbane City Council has been supporting them for very many years now. And they were, um, absolutely delighted to be able to be up on that stage singing their hearts out. We all got involved. We had to do our little bit of singing towards the end. So, um, it was a great evening and, and something that I really want to say a huge congratulations to all of the performers because I know what a thrill it is for them, uh, to be performing on stage. Uh, Mr Chair, moving to the report, we had a committee presentation on the Sir Thomas Brisbane Planetarium. And yet again, our committee finds out such interesting bits of, um, information when they, when we have these wonderful, um, wonderful, uh, presentations. And so, um, we heard very much about the Planetarium hosting, um, a lot of school holiday activities, theatre productions and special music events.
Councillor Howard, please.
Thank you. We also heard that we were able to provide community groups with the opportunity to host theatre or musical performances such as the Anywhere Festival and the Fringe Brisbane Festival, um, utilising the Planetarium. So there were quite a number of activities that, that were there. Uh, but of course, um, the Cosmic Sky Dome was something that we were all very much interested in. And there's a number of events coming up. Uh, first of all, the Navigators, which tells the story of the Maori, Pacifica and European navigation. And Magic Globe, a story of the seasons, which is a children's movie. And that will be in the, um, school holidays. But something that we're all looking forward to is a visual display accompanying the album, The Dark Side of the Moon by Pink Floyd. Now, I'm sure that there are very many people here in the chamber who are Pink Floyd fans. And this will be a unique opportunity for them to, um, to experience that. So I'll, um, I will make sure that we send you information about that wonderful event that will be coming up very soon. But I just want to finish by saying a huge thank you to the Planetarium staff. The Planetarium went through, um, quite an upheaval, as did all of our venues and, and, uh, businesses across Brisbane during the COVID. And they have sprung back beautifully. They are doing an amazing job, um, out there in the Botanic Gardens. We know that, um, schoolchildren are loving the fact that they can go along and really, um, firsthand find out about the universe, so to speak. So I just want to say through you, Mr Chair, a really huge thank you to all of our council officers and the amazing work they do at the Planetarium. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howard. Any further speakers? See no one rising. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of August, 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 22nd of August, 2023 be adopted. Councillor Cunningham, you've got the call.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Our presentation at committee meeting last week was from the People and Culture Branch on council's refreshed employee value proposition, or EVP as it's known. At the heart of our EVP is a summation of compelling reasons why people choose to work and want to stay to work for Brisbane City Council. The core EVP is grow your career to deliver a better Brisbane and it's supported by five pillars. Those pillars are supporting growth in Brisbane, growing your career, benefits that matter, passionate in our work and connection to a diverse workforce. Council's EVP permeates through all phases in the employment lifecycle, from attraction, recruitment, retention and also upon exiting. Uh, through careful consideration, Mr Chair, and continued effort in living the values of an EVP, it helps improve business performance, promote council to diverse talent and network and provide a positive employee experience. And I commend the report for the chamber.
Thank you councillor Cunningham. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Uh, yes, thank you.
Uh, you microphone please, councillor Strunk.
Turn that microphone on. Thank you, Chair. My right to speak, uh, on the presentation we, uh, we had, uh, last week in regards to EPV. Uh, and of course, as, we, we should first state that of course, the council's greatest asset is its people. It's this, uh, team of employees that, uh, carry out the various, uh, assignments and, 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 sorry, that carry out the work for the city, uh, that is needed to, um, be a first world city. And, and I think Brisbane's working towards that. I don't think we've got there yet, but I think we're working towards that. So, um, it was interesting to, um, to listen to the presentation in regards to how we attract and recruit, basically, how we retain and sadly sometimes of course, uh, employees leave us and for various reasons. And it's always, uh, important to know why, why people, uh, why, why some of the staff leave from time to time. Uh, and I'm not talking about necessarily, I'm not talking retirement here now, but I'm talking about leave, uh, during their employment, uh, prior to maybe retirement. Um, I asked a question in regards to what, um, what were the, um, what was the percentage, uh, in a, in a, in a generational, uh, point of view, um, you know, say 18 to 35, 35 to 45 and over 55. Uh, what, what percentage of employees, uh, leave us, uh, in that, in that, in those age groups, right? Um, within a year or maybe the last three to five years. And unfortunately, um, we weren't being, we weren't able to be told what those figures were. I think these are very important figures and I think it was really germane to the presentation. But the Chair undertook to, uh, to, to get that information for us and make it available, uh, at the committee this morning. Uh, unfortunately, uh, and I, and I, and I take, uh, I take her, I take the Chair at her word. Uh, the, some of the, the information that came through wasn't relevant to the question I asked and she has re-asked the question. But because this is being debated or talked about in, in the chamber today and will be next week, I decided to raise that, uh, to raise that issue and put it on the record. Now, the other thing I asked about was in regards to employee satisfaction surveys, which I think would, would, would be really germane or relevant to, uh, this, uh, this programme as well. Uh, and we used to get that, uh, we used to get those, uh, those stats, uh, on a yearly basis. But I was told that now, um, it doesn't come out as one report, uh, each department do their own. So, uh, I, I, I suggested that maybe that information could be made available as well. Um, it wasn't forthcoming, uh, so I said, well, I would, uh, put questions on notice and just find out because it's really important to know why some of our employees leave, uh, under what circumstances. Uh, and it's very important to know also this sort of information because with, uh, with an incoming administration next year, uh, led by Tracy Price, I'm sure any incoming Lord Mayor would like to know what has been going on over the last 20 years in regards to employee satisfaction. Very important. So, uh, anyways, with those few words, I, I think the presentation was great by our, uh, our, uh, our, uh, council presenter. Very, very extensive and it really covered all those boxes I would have thought are very important in regards to knowing how to attract, recruit, retain and sadly sometimes exit this, uh, this council. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Strunk. Uh, any further speakers on the Finance Committee report? See no one rising. Councillor Cunningham? No, write a reply. We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item six on the agenda. Councillor Massey, would you please move your motion?
Yep, thanks Chair. Um, I move that Brisbane City Council does not support the Queensland Government's proposal to demolish and rebuild the Gabba Stadium at the cost of at least $2 billion, $2.7 billion.
He, he, yes, support that strongly, seconded.
A second would have just done. Councillor Johnston?
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order councillor Owen?
Mr Chair, um, I have a declarable, um, conflict of interest in relation to this matter due to property held in the vicinity and therefore I will be excusing myself from debate and voting on this matter.
Thank you councillor Owen. It has been moved by councillor Massey and seconded by councillor Johnston that Brisbane City Council does not support the Queensland Government proposal to demolish and rebuild the Gabba Stadium at a cost of $2.7 billion. Is there any debate? Councillor Massey, you've got the call.
Thank you Chair. Three weeks ago, the Labor Government, state government announced four options for the Gabba redevelopment, landing on the $2.7 billion option. In this process, the state government announced the relocation of East Brisbane State School and its 300 and something, uh, students to a site at Cooperu Secondary College and moved forward with plans to lock out residents for an unknown period of time from, and residents of Kangaroo Point, East Brisbane, Wollongaba and South Brisbane from their beloved and well-used park, Raymond Park, for what would be a half-size athletics track. This announcement was received by students, families, friends, residents with disapproval. And that disapproval grows daily, not just within these areas, but citywide and statewide. Uh, this announcement, um, was received with disapproval, not just because of the disruptive effects on parents, teachers and students. Um, the disruptive effects of building and spending another $100 million, um, in a school outside of the East Brisbane catchment on, um, what is a bad infested flood plain. Um, and it's not just about the flow and effects that the closure of the East Brisbane State School um, would have on schools like West, West End and Dutton Park State School. Um, this disapproval is also about financial management. At a time where people across Brisbane struggle with mortgages, rents and the cost of living. And it's also about legacy. And the legacy that could be left behind. When initially announced, the Gabba rebuild was estimated at a cost of $1 billion. We now know that that cost has since blown out and there is no doubt in my mind and the mind of many others that the Gabba rebuild would cost more than the current $2.7 billion that it's budgeted for. And this is an incredible amount of money at a time when our schools, health and housing systems are in desperate need of funding. It's a financially irresponsible decision by state government to spend $2.7 billion and probably more on 8,000 more seats when the reality is the Gabba can be upgraded. A new look of paint has been used, implementation potentially of unisex training, uh, uh, change rooms and increased accessibility, which has been previously done at other stadiums for anywhere between 250,000 to, uh, 500,000. two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. Doing this, the Gabba would be able to deliver an incredible opening and closing ceremony, and still be an Olympics venue, maybe just not for athletics, because there are other, there are other options. Olympic rugby sevens were introduced in Rio 2016, and played in Tokyo 2020. And for football, which would be pretty timely after the FIFA Women's World Cup, remembering the associated football group games were played at the Gabba during the Sydney 2000 Olympics. The case for why the Gabba rebuild shouldn't happen grows even more damning when you consider legacy. And that's a word often used when we are talking about the Olympics. The Gabba rebuild will deliver a temporary world-class athletics venue, the key word being temporary. Doesn't Brisbane and Queensland athletics deserve more? We all remember Cathy Freeman's four hundred metre win and how it ignited a nation and built a new dream for young athletes across this nation. Being a highlight premier sport, athletics will again ignite excitement and ambition for young future Cathy Freemans. Do they not deserve the legacy of a world-class track and training facility to remain in Brisbane? This, of course, could be delivered in Nathan, in, at the Queensland Sport and Athletic Centre. There's even a practice track next door. This centre could be upgraded to Olympic standard, and the cost would be much, much less than two point seven billion. Last Tuesday, as we were in the chambers, senators packed into a Brisbane conference room to scrutinise the cost and benefit of the city's Olympic and Paralympic Games. This inquiry was sparked when the Premier decided to scrap an independent infrastructure agency to oversee projects for the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. At this inquiry, Matt Carroll, the Australian Olympic Committee CEO, stated clearly, the IOC does not require the building of new venues unless you really need them. He also said, the reconstruction of the Gabba is for AFL and cricket. The Gabba rebuild is not required for Brisbane to host the Paralymp, the Olympic and Paralympic Games. That's why the federal government walked away from its contribution to the costs. The other thing about Brisbane 2032 is this challenge: zero waste, zero fossil fuels. Brisbane 2030 is supposed to be the first climate-positive Olympics, and yet architects and experts have warned us that the Gabba rebuild will blow out the game's carbon footprint. For Brisbane 32, 2032, to be climate-positive, we not only have to take out the emissions from the event, the emissions that we build for the event, and then more. The amount of energy to pull it down, to turn it, and then turn around and rebuild a stadium will most likely jeopardise a climate-positive Olympics. Residents across Brisbane, as they learn more and more about the Gabba rebuild, and its destruct, and the destruction they'll leave to local communities, how it's not actually there for the Olympics, and how it won't leave a lasting legacy for athletics in Brisbane and Queensland, and how it could put this climate-friendly Olympics in jeopardy, are viewing it more and more negatively. The Save East Brisbane State School petition and the Save Raymond Park petition now have over six thousand signatures, and it's growing daily. These residents, parents, and students in the Gabba and Cooperu Ward and beyond have vowed to keep fighting and bringing their message to a broader and wider audience. And today, it's time for Brisbane City Council to stand with them, to stand and push for a delivery of a true legacy for Brisbane athletics, to actually deliver a climate-positive Olympics, and not just future greenwashing, and to demonstrate in real time, as the Lord Mayor says over and over again, that it has a stance, a firm stance, on financial responsibility and management. I urge every councillor to support this motion, and to state clearly and loudly that Brisbane City Council does not support the Gabba rebuild. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Further speakers? See no further speakers. Councillor Johnston?
Sorry, I'm, I'm sad that the LMP aren't going to rise to speak on this. For anybody who may be watching at home or the East Brisbane community, the local councillors who represent this part of Brisbane are hiding, and in particular, I think that's councillor Cunningham. I have seconded this motion, as I did, I think, last year now, I can't, November? Thank you. I have never seen such a bad public policy decision by the State Government, and I've seen some doozies. There is no justification to knock down a perfectly good sporting stadium, oh, sorry, to, to knock it down and rebuild it, but to essentially take away a beloved local school that services a high-growth catchment. It does not make sense. It does not stack up. It is bad public policy. It is, it is a diabolical decision that will have an adverse impact on the suburbs of East Brisbane, Kangaroo Point, South Brisbane, and then a knock-on impact Cooperu, a knock-on impact into Mai Ward, into areas like Burandad, Dutton Park, because hundreds of local families are going to be displaced to schools kilometers away from where they go to school now. Now, my views on this are very clear, and they've been clear since this decision, this absolutely diabolically disastrous decision was announced. The redevelopment of the Gabba was never part of our Olympics bid. Now, I know, because I sat here through the debate, and I asked a lot of questions, and I wasn't sure what I was going to do until we got to the vote. There are a lot of new councillors here, and, and some of them may be forgiven for thinking, well, this is just part of the Olympics bid. No, it is not. It was never part of our formal bid to the IOC. It is not part of the Brisbane 32 Olympics infrastructure pitch. And the IOC themselves have said that the new model for the Olympics, which we heard over and over and over again from councillor Adams, yeah, yes, councillor Adams and the Lord Mayor, we heard over and over again, no, no, this is about reusing infrastructure, and this is about being smarter. It's the new bid model. And I, it's stupid me. I'm, I'm the stupid one here, because I believed them. I believed what they said. I believed that we had a plan, this is what we would be doing. I didn't agree with everything, but at least there was a plan that I understood would happen. That was blown out of the water by one of the worst decisions that I've seen Anastasia Palache make. And I think that it is going to hurt the Labor Party so badly at the election next year. I don't even know, the LMP probably on board. I mean, David Christopher Lee's probably going to knock the thing down too, who knows? But this stadium does not form part of our Olympics bid for Brisbane 32. In fact, the bid includes a new stadium at Albion, I think, near the old dog track area. It is such a waste of money. It was a back-of-the-envelope billion-dollar announcement, which now, in today's terms, is two point seven, which I think will be doubled by the time it will be built. In addition to that, it's going to have an adverse impact on construction in Brisbane, because this project, big project, will suck in all the construction, all the workers, all the materials, all the resources, and put more pressure back on building homes that we need for development in Brisbane and in the southeast corner. And the state are overheating the market by delivering a project here that is unnecessary. It will over-stimulate the construction market and put more pressure on smaller projects in the residential area that are needed. It is also bad public policy. And this is the thing that I can't get over. I, I, I am the beneficiary of such a good education, because my parents said, this is how you change your life. This is how you change what happens to you. They benefited from some, they made sure my sister and I got a great education. Knocking down part of a school, kicking the kids off the school site, and moving them kilometers away to a swamp is bad public policy. It puts pressure on roads. It, it puts pressure on parents to drive their kids to school. It disconnects them from their local community. It disconnects them from their neighbourhood. It is such a bad decision. We know that education in local schools, in local communities, that builds that sense of community, creates a safe place, a nurturing place for children. That's where they're going to learn well. That's what we want. We want walkable neighbourhoods. We want families that can actively travel to school and can do so safely with their kids. This decision will knock that out of the park. Absolutely will not happen. So it is bad public policy. I too followed the news and saw the, and saw the Federal Committee inquiry that was on underway. And I just want to reconfirm, this is what the Australian Olympic Committee CEO, Matt Carroll, said about the Gabba. The multi-billion-dollar redevelopment of Brisbane's Gabba Stadium, quote, was not necessary for the city to host the 2032 Olympic Games. He went on to say that it was not required by the International Olympic Committee. You can't get it any clearer than that. Even the IOC is saying, we don't need it. They very clearly said, this is being done for cricket and AFL. The cricket and AFL people are cranky, because there'll be seven years without the state's venue for AFL and cricket. So it has an adverse impact on ongoing sport. It's not necessary as part of the Olympics bid. The IOC are saying, the Australian Olympic Committee are saying it's not necessary. It means that Raymond Park's got to be essentially destroyed to accommodate the warm-up track. It is completely wrong. And finally, where this school is going to go, into a floodplain, into a swamp, into a terrible area where it's going to flood. This is not, yeah, out of catchment for all these kids. It's going to have a knock-on impact on the catchments around Cooperu, and it just will have an adverse impact. I just want to say, I, this should just be an easy decision for this council. We should stand up as a council now and say to the State Government, they have got this wrong. And I know that's hard for the Labor councillors, who feel they probably have to support their colours, but this is a bad decision. Every single resident that I speak to in my area will tell me when I ask them, it's a terrible decision. It's a terrible decision. I don't want to see this council enabling the Queensland State Government like they are doing. The Lord Mayor has publicly said he supports the redevelopment of the Gabba. The only way the redevelopment of the Gabba can happen is if East Brisbane State School is decommissioned as a school and part of that land taken. So the LMP currently support the redevelopment of the Gabba and the loss of that local school. I find the two local councillors who are most impacted here, their silence is shocking. Councillor Cunningham and councillor Adams really should be hopping up and saying, yep, good on you, councillor Massey, for bringing this forward again. I know we didn't support it. I know we didn't support it. Look at councillor Cunningham. I think that's very, I think it's very deliberate.
Councillor Johnston, to the motion, please.
You saw it? I saw it too. And so will everybody on the telly. So I, I, I am just shocked that the local councillors cannot stand up and do the right things by their community here. The impact of this school going kilometers away from where it is currently will have a knock-on impact in the inner southern suburbs, and that is not good for anybody. I was very happy to support it, you know, almost a year ago. I'm happy to support it again here today. The LMP should not be tricky here. They should not be tricky. You can't say you support redevelopment of the Gabba, because it involves, it involves, it involves the demolition of, well, part of a school and relocation of those students. It is critically important that Brisbane City Council does not enable the State Government to demolish this school. Our approvals will be required for some things, and we heard from councillor Wines. We know that this council works closely with the State Government on, on assets, and those assets are going to be, have to be managed between council and the State Government. We shouldn't be facilitating this. We shouldn't be supporting.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired.
We should send a clear message.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers? Deputy Mayor?
I'm very disappointed, but not surprised that nobody in Labor has stood up to talk about this. But councillors are very aware of this motion, because it was an almost identical motion that came through the chamber just over a year ago, and councillor Johnson confirmed that. And we made our position very clear then, and we'll do the same again now. And as for councillor Cunningham and the disgraceful bullying we just saw from councillor Johnson, she has been very clear in her position.
Point of order, councillor Johnson?
At no point, sorry, I believe councillor Adams is engaging in unsuitable meeting behaviour by making an adverse allegation about me when I've simply been debating this issue. It is unsuitable meeting conduct to accuse me of bullying, and I ask that you rule it out of order.
Councillor Johnson, I did call you back to the report because you were engaged in, in debate, well, not debate with another councillor, but you were discussing the councillor's...
...demeanour.
Point of order. It's not bullying to just...
Hang on, councillor Johnson, I haven't given you the call. Councillor Johnson, you're point of order.
Mr. Chair, it is not bullying to talk about a councillor's position. It is outrageous that councillor Adam has, has stood up and accused me of bullying. It is offensive to me. It is completely untrue, and I would ask that it is withdrawn. It's unsuitable meeting behaviour to make an allegation of that kind.
Deputy Mayor, would you consider to withdraw or maybe rephrase?
Oh, rephrase. I'm absolutely not withdrawing. If councillor Johnson spoke about councillor Cunningham's position, that would have been fine. She did not. She made a snarky comment about her face and her reaction. And did you get it? Because I'll get it on TV. That was the quote.
Yeah, thank you.
So, just clarifying that. And councillor Cunningham has been very clear about the position, and that's probably what the rolling the ayes was, because the blatant mistruths we just heard and the innuendo from councillor Johnson were just incorrect. One thing that is correct, though, is that the redevelopment of the Gabba is a State Government project. We agree. It is a completely independent project of the Olympics. It has got nothing to do with OCOG. And again, that was confirmed by Matt Carroll as well. But whether they have designs now or have designs in three years, this project is bubbling along on the State Government timeframes, taking advice from State Government members and ministers, not council, not OCOG, not the federal government, that are also not involved with this. This is purely a State Government project. Does it need refurbishment? Yes, we have said it needs refurbishment. But none of us are privy to what any of the intimate designs, the PVRs and everything are around the Gabba, because it's not an OCOG process, it's a State Government process. But one thing is very, very clear today here through you, Mr. Chair, is that the Greens don't support the upgrade, but Labor does. Anyone standing up today to have a chat? Oh, no, no, no. So I warn the people of Brisbane, an alliance in the coalition of chaos between Labor and Greens in city council is the worst possible outcome you can see for Brisbane residents. And this motion is the prime example of it. It is such a chaotic situation. Not one Labor person stood up to vote, looked down very, very, very intently at their paper when the call was for the next speaker. They do need the Green preferences, Lord Mayor, so it's a, it's a vote each way. And Labor's Lord Mayor candidate, who we've heard a lot about this afternoon, she's going to do this, she's going to do that. Is she going to take a position on this? Oh, no, no, no. Actually asked on ABC Radio earlier this month, point blank. Actually asked on ABC Radio earlier this month, point blank.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
You've made a ruling, you're not allowed to speak about other political candidates in debates, so I would ask that you apply that ruling. I would ask that you apply that ruling to the deputy mayor.
Councillor Johnson, when I am speaking, you do not speak. You don't need to finish because I did not talk about candidates, I spoke about something else. I don't uphold your point of order, and you can look back in the minutes to figure it out yourself. Deputy Mayor.
When talking about the stadium and the demolishing of the stadium, which is very relevant to this motion today, the Lord Merrill candidate for the ALP was asked, point blank, "What is your view on demolishing and rebuilding at this stage?" Her response was, oh no, sorry, the question was, "Do you have a view?", the response was, "No." So we were shocked to hear this because Labor's previous position on this matter is in fact that they supported the refurbishment because this motion has been here before, but we'll see what they do here today, Mister Chair. So no, we will not be supporting the motion in this place today, and obviously the ALP does not want to speak about this, so I move it be put.
Seconded.
We have a motion for, before us to put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
We have a division called by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Massey. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clerks, please read the result.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour and six against.
The motion to put, the motion has passed. Councillor Massey, you have a right of reply for five minutes.
Thank you, Chair. You know what I didn't hear just before? A position from the deputy mayor. They said they wouldn't support the motion, but at no point was there actually a clear statement on a position whether they did or didn't support the Gabba rebuild. I didn't hear it. And I'll check the minutes, but what I heard was also deflection. Deflection, saying very clearly, "It's state government, they're on a timeline, they're making the decisions, this doesn't make sense, it's deflecting back." Even though, week after week in this chamber, we hear the LNP constantly go on about working with state when it's convenient and not working with them, and what they're doing incorrect when it's also convenient. And here it's convenient to say that it's a state government decision that this council can't stand against. And, you know, I, I think that's pretty, I mean, I had expected more, honestly. I had expected more from the Chair. I'd expected more from councillors on the opposing side to actually input into this debate, because I do think this is going to be a really, really important topic as we move closer, not only to the council elections, but also to the state elections. But most importantly than that, it's because it actually affects people that we are supposed to represent. They don't just exist in the Gabba ward. The flow effects won't just happen in the Gabba ward. It'll happen beyond, and we're supposed to represent these people. And here, very clearly, there is no responsibility, and if there is a responsibility, it's saying, "No, we won't stand, we won't even make a statement to signal to state government that we do not support it." And I think the people at home are watching, I know that residents are watching, I know that students, I know the parents that will continue to fight every day, the residents that will keep fighting for their park, to keep their park, will keep fighting, and they'll keep sending that message out wider and wider and wider. And I'll refer back to this vote. Again, the deputy mayor used an opportunity to discuss any of the points that I mentioned, but didn't, chose to use it as a political football, to bring out a tired tagline that no one's listening to because there is no coalition. There's only one coalition here, it's the Liberal National Party that are afraid of using the Liberal National Party. They're the coalition.
Councillors, councillor Massey, you've got the call.
And the truth is, that's all it is, and I think, I hope that residents remember this. I hope they remember the fact that this was used as a political football by the deputy mayor. Their real lives, their real concerns, the real results that will happen on the ground to them. It was dismissive, it was clear, and I think it's hurtful. So I am disappointed but not surprised. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Massey. We will now put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnson and councillor Massey. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Mister Chair, the noes have it, the voting being two in favour and twenty-two against.
Councillors, the motion has not passed. Can you please resume your seats? Councillors, are there any petitions? Don't think anybody is standing, no. Councillors, are there any, are there any statements required as a result of the Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? Again, I see no one standing. Councillors, are there any items of general business? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I rise to commend a bus driver who had witnessed handled an unexpected incident with professionalism, respect and dignity. Mister Chair, last Friday morning I took council's free city loop to attend, to attend Comsec Local Government Forum that was held in QUT. I got on the bus at King George Square State, uh, stop and enjoyed the trip towards the city's Botanic Gardens, which is the closest stop to the venue. The electric bus was travelling smoothly along Adelaide Street, but as the bus was waiting to turn right onto Wolf Street, there was a sudden commotion from a female passenger in the rear of the bus. She was accusing the bus driver of not turning fast enough and continued yelling until the bus reached the next stop. This sudden incident put everyone, whether the driver and the passengers, in shock as this lady was acting quite aggressively and was highly emotional. However, the driver called Alan Gallagher has acted professionally with respect and dignity in calming, calmly dealing with this passenger and let her get off the, at the next stop without causing further panic to the passengers on board. When I got off the Botanic Gardens stop, I went forward to the driver, introduced myself and thanked him for handling the situation. Mister Chair, I'd just like to take this opportunity to commend this driver, Alan Gallagher, and all our bus drivers for doing an outstanding job in serving the commuters of Brisbane with professionalism and acknowledged their hard work and dedication to our city. Thank you.
Any further business? Councillor Collier.
Thank you. I'd just rise to speak on Passion Street and Riding Road. Locally, we all know the dangerous Passion Street and Riding Road intersection, and for too long this LNP council has ignored the calls of locals to fix it. I stand with my community and I once again call on the LNP to urgently fix Passion Street and Riding Road. Families and children, use it to get to school. Primary school age children have been hit by cars here. Elderly couples have been injured. Silence and inaction from this council is just not good enough. Accidents like these are preventable. It is all about priorities, Lord Mayor. You decide what gets funded in the budget and what doesn't. The LNP have been silent on this for years, but our community simply will not stop fighting for this intersection to be fixed. And let me be clear, I stand with them. The community is calling. Will the Lord Mayor listen?
Any further business?
Yes.
Lord Mayor.
Look, I want to talk about the intersection of Riding Road and Passion Street, because this is an issue that there's been a lot of discussion about over a significant period of time. And what I would simply say in direct response to what councillor Collier has put forward today is that this proposed intersection upgrade that's been discussed for a number of years is not without pros and cons. We have had a look at the different options, we've had a look at potential upgrades, but what I will say to councillor Collier is if you are genuine about this upgrade and you don't want to play politics, then the first thing, well, I, Madam Acting Chair, I hear councillor Collier saying, "Just do it." I would be interested to know what consultation councillor Collier has done with the immediate property owners around that area, because as with any intersection upgrade, it requires the replacement of a unsignalised intersection with a signalised intersection, it requires the removal of all parking in the immediate vicinity of that intersection. Now, we know that there are multiple businesses along there, we know across the road is Hawthorn Park, and that there are major generators of parking demand in that area. And if councillor Collier is happy to put in writing to me that she is happy to remove all of that parking in the immediate, in the immediate vicinity, then we can move forward with this project. We can move forward with this project, because in the end, really, that's what it comes down to. This is a project that can proceed, and we are willing to consider putting up for budget funding if we can get that commitment in writing from councillor Collier that she is happy to see the removal of parking throughout that precinct. That involves the parking outside the businesses on both sides of the intersection and the parking on the other side opposite Hawthorn Park. And so I am very familiar with this intersection, like many of us are. That is the reality. It is easy to call for someone else to do something. What we need to do here is see the local councillor do her job.
One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Collier, you were listened to in silence.
What we need to see is the local councillor do her job, and if she supports the intersection upgrade and is willing to proceed with what will be a removal of parking, a significant removal of parking in the area, then we can talk turkey. We can have a serious talk about how to progress this intersection. But what, what I suspect will happen is that she'll defer the hard decisions to other people, she'll make it someone else's problem. She will simply call for something to happen and then no responsibility on her part. Let's have a bit of give and take here. I'd like to see something in writing from councillor Collier that she supports consideration of the removal of parking. Have a chat to the local business people, have a chat to the park users, have a chat to the residents, and based on those chats, please put, please put something in writing to me and I will consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Any further business? Councillor Cassidy.
Well, thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on three items, the voice, housing and the process for the upgrade of intersections in Brisbane. And I'll start with that. We just had an amazing intervention by the Lord Mayor in this council meeting where he's just upended the whole entire process, Chair, of how a project is to proceed. So apparently, we're now to believe for this, at Passion Street and Riding Road, there is a secret design that's in, that is being held by the Lord Mayor. Because he said, he listed out all of the qualifications for this upgrade.
Point of order, Lord Mayor.
Claim to be misrepresented.
So the Lord Mayor said that all of the parking would have to be removed right around there, all these major changes have to be made, so he has a design. The Lord Mayor has a design, he's let the cat out of the bag on that one, but won't give that design, won't give that design to the local councillor.
Or my community.
Or the community won't release that publicly. So I'm sure if the Lord Mayor would release that design, their consultation could happen on it. But I suspect what the Lord Mayor is actually doing is just going to play politics with this. He's clearly going to go out to the community and say it's... That sounds familiar, doesn't it? Doesn't that sound so familiar, but the Lord Mayor says it's someone else's problem? It's somebody else's fault. That is a common theme of this Lord Mayor, not just today, but at every meeting we have here today. So according to the Lord Mayor, now, this really is, you know, Rome is burning and Nero is fiddling over there at the moment, when, when the, the entire process for an intersection upgrade in Brisbane has been totally flipped on its head because the Lord Mayor had a thought bubble in, in general business. The Lord Mayor just gets up and says, "Oh, well, an intersection upgrade can only proceed when a local councillor goes and does their own consultation on a design that doesn't exist in the, in the, in the public realm. What if we all do that?" Then the Lord Mayor said they'll get funded. So what if we all come back next week after having done consultation on, on intersection upgrades everywhere? The Lord Mayor's commitment today is that he will fund every single one of them. What rubbish. What absolute rubbish from this Lord Mayor. How, how ridiculous to just be making some sort of silly policy on the fly like that because he's had just a very small amount of pressure put on him by councillor Collier. Just getting started. But I want to talk about two other things as well tonight, Chair, and one of those is the upcoming voice referendum. I was at Zillmia train station this morning handing out information on the upcoming referendum to the, referendum on the voice to Parliament, and the response from the community on the ground was overwhelmingly positive. A couple of people had some questions, there was a few that didn't want the information, but there would have been in excess of a hundred people very keen to get that or already saying they're voting yes. And what's also been really positive for me over the last couple of days was news of more moderate Liberals coming out in support of a yes vote on the referendum. We saw Pat Farmer, who was the Liberal Member of Parliament for Macarthur in New South Wales, he's, he's running for yes alongside Robert D Castella. And we saw last night Julie Bishop, the former deputy Liberal leader of the Liberals, come out strongly in favour of a yes vote for the voice, and she said something really powerful last night. She said that after twenty years of sitting in Parliament, she never saw anything that worked, and that's why she thinks the voice should be given a go. The no side last night rolled out Barnaby Joyce to hit back. That's the, that's the calibre of the no side. So I'm continually impressed by Liberals who are putting the national interest above politics, and I'm continually disappointed by Brisbane's LNP councillors who are now coming across as the most conservative faction of the Liberal Party nationwide. Now on housing, Chair, I want to speak a bit about this LNP's approach to the delivery of housing here in Brisbane. It took this LNP council five years to deliver a housing strategy that they promised in 2018, except they couldn't quite bring themselves to call it a housing strategy because since being... being released five months ago, we haven't seen any outcomes from it. Oh, actually, except for the Carilpa TLPI, which the deputy mayor admitted recently that it would take half a decade to come to fruition. But what else? What is next, is the question. Now, we know this LNP mayor has form, he's called social housing slum living, we know the LNP have supported the building of five-star hotels in the CBD of Brisbane over affordable housing in the suburbs. Housing supply and housing affordability is critical work for council, but week after week, month after month, it is radio silence from this Lord Mayor. Housing is a human right, it is the foundation of a decent society. Labour is the party of housing, and a Labour administration would make this a priority for council.
Lord Mayor, your misrepresentation.
Yes, councillor Cassidy incorrectly claimed there was some kind of secret plan for an intersection upgrade. The reality is, there's a fundamental failure to understand...
One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Collier, I've already told you, you are to listen quietly, please. You had your chance to speak. Lord Mayor.
To understand basic road rules in Queensland, because...
(inaudible).
Well, the point is...
If you stop interrupting, we will hear it.
The road rules say...
Councillor Cassidy.
The road rules say a driver must not stop or park their vehicle within 20 metres of a signalised intersection unless otherwise signed. And for most intersections, it's actually much longer than 20 metres. This is a basic rule that everyone should know.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Any further business?
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Owen.
Point of order, Chair.
One moment, councillor Owen.
That was clearly an act of disorder, that was not a point of misrepresentation, that was entering debate and ask for your ruling on that.
My ruling is that the Lord Mayor was explaining the misrepresentation. Councillor Owen.
I'm just waiting for it to reset. Thank you, Madam Deputy Chair. Madam Deputy Chair, I rise tonight to speak on some local community events and community organisations. Can I start by acknowledging the Divya Geeti Jagrati Sansam that's commonly referred to as DJJS at my way? It was wonderful to attend Shrimad, Bhagwad, Katha, Gayan, Yaga. And this is a very important event in their calendar, and it's very much a religious event, and it's also an event of blessings. So the focus is clearly on making sure that they give back to the community and consider those less fortunate, so it's a very important aspect of their calendar, and it's one in which, in this city, we ensure that many multicultural groups can celebrate these events in a very safe, peaceful and harmonious way. I'd also like to acknowledge the wonderful students of Stretton State College. Friday night was their musical, and this year it was the Addams Family. And can I say the work that those students have done, not only to put on the performance, but to put together such an amazing set. There was a lot of effort and dedication that went into that entire musical, and they did a fantastic job. So I would just like to formally commend them on the effort that they went into for that. To the Carolee Association of Queensland, the Onam celebrations over the weekend that councillor Strunk and I attended were, as usual, a very high-end event. And to all of the people behind the scenes who put together about 900 meals, it is a phenomenal effort to coordinate all of that in a very short period of time, they did an amazing job doing that. To the outgoing committee of the Lions Club of Brisbane Chinese, thank you for your efforts in the community, and I look forward to supporting them going forward, and I know that the Lord Mayor and councillor Marks were at their changeover the other night. It is very important that we do acknowledge these community organisations that do so much work. A special congratulations to St Stephen's School on 20 years. Wonderful to see our local Catholic primary school having a wonderful event, and the wild encounters with their lovely snakes and reptiles, as well as the petting zoo, were a great hit with the kids this year. To Canada Sangha for their chess tournament, great to see young people exercising their minds in different ways. Also, I do want to acknowledge Polara State School and St Stephen's because they have received acknowledgements under the Eco Marines programmes that are certainly through you to councillor Davis, they're certainly very focused on protecting our local environment. To our wonderful Gold Stars and Little Stars, I know many of the councillors are getting around to these presentations, but certainly I've had an opportunity during Book Week to also go to my Good Start Early Learning Centre and also CNK and do some reading with the kids, and it's wonderful to be part of those programmes as well. Can I just acknowledge Constance and Stanley who were at the 100-plus club the other day? Wonderful to meet with them, and Constance's father actually built the Ithaca Pool for council, and Stanley's wife was a curator of the art gallery here at Brisbane City Hall when the art gallery was down in the basement level. Wonderful to be in the same room as 18 centenarians, they're lovely people and we can learn so much from their life experience. Can I just also say to the Indos Conference Organising Committee, well done, it was a privilege to represent the Lord Mayor at the conference dinner the other night, and they continually to exceed the high level of standards that they set year on year. And I just would like to say to all of the community groups across the city, they're doing an amazing job and we value your contribution. Thank you.
Any further business? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I stand to speak on school strikes, sorry, climate strike, school strike for climate. Who here remembers the 2019 school strike for climate change, which had 30,000 people? Who was there at the protest? Okay, that was unexpected, because there were 30,000 people there. On the 15th of September, the Queensland School Strike for Climate will be again striking. And interestingly, the theme for this year is 2050 is too late. They will be calling for no new coal and gas, 100% renewable energy and exports by 2030, and they want to fund transition and job creation for fossil fuel industry workers and communities. I'm so excited about it, they've taken a long break, it's a really amazing, dedicated of volunteers that are from high schools, high schools across the city, and I'm so excited to be joining them as an ally, because this is about the school students and what they fear for climate change. So I just want to give a shout out and tell everyone that it is on the 15th of September, and I will maybe see some of you there. Thank you.
Any further business?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to rise very briefly. I've just found out that one of our wonderful officers, Sean Kelly, who works in the aquatics team, is actually leaving us. He has done a fabulous, fabulous job, and I have worked with him very closely, particularly at Jindaly and Carroll Park State School. We're very sad to see him leaving, but we did also, historically, you may not realise that Sean actually used to work at Amazons. So he, from a very young age, had a real passion for the pools and the aquatic space, so we wish him all the very best in his future endeavours. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hutton. Any further business? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Chair. Listen, I just rise tonight to speak on one event that actually happened over the weekend, and that was a massive festival that was held at the Forest Lake River Stage, called the Forest Lake Festival, and I just want to...I can't speak highly enough of the organising committee headed by Kylie and the five other community members who are all volunteers. They received no money, they worked basically for six months to pull this festival together. They've been doing it now for three years, they've now incorporated, which is really good, which helps for sponsorship and the like, but I can say that this year was just exceeded the results of the last two years by a huge margin. It was almost like a mini ECA. We had rides, we had show bags, we had all the fun and stuff in Side Show Alley, we had about 100 stalls, and of course we had two performing stages that were going on, which were far enough apart that they didn't interfere with one another. Gosh, we even had Boris the Black Knight, Eric Simmons, you know, from Wombat fame on the telly. He's a retired...well, he's not so retired, I don't think entertainers ever really retire, but he lives locally at In Forest Lake, did a terrific job in keeping the programme going on the lake stage. And number-wise, I don't want to speculate, because it's really hard, because there's no gate that people actually go through, but I would suggest it was probably 10,000 to 12,000 people, and that was from 2 o'clock through to 8 o'clock when we had the fireworks on a little barge on the lake, which of course everyone stuck around for. And then it was a little bit of chaos once the fireworks finished, everyone wanting to go home about the same time. But I just want to also give a big shout out to my team members who worked very, very hard from 2, well, they actually set up about 12:30, and of course they were there for bump out as well. They went through an enormous bout of...we make little balloon animals and things like that, and really right up till 8 o'clock, the kids were still coming up for them. But I just want to have a big shout out to them and the team of volunteers that helped on my stall as well. And a lot of those were just from the community, not necessarily party members or anything like that, but just volunteers that just wanted to come along and have a bit of fun, which was really helpful. A big shout out also to the Heritage Community Bank, who funded the majority of the funds that were needed to put on the festival. Also, one agency, which is a real estate company that's been doing business in the area for 20 years, they were a big sponsor as well. I just want to take a big shout out to them, because they...a lot of our real estate agencies actually do help with community events nowadays, and it's really good to see that corporate help when needed. So anyways, I just want to, again, just finish off by saying thank you very much to the organising committee led by Kylie, and we look forward to an even bigger and better Forest Lake Festival next year. Thank you.
Any further business? If there is no further business, I declare the meeting closed.